Good evening. We'll call this work session of the common council to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Cress.
Here.
Councilmember Lane Felter.
He's here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Excused.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Yocum.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Item number one, website redesign update.
Thank you, Mayor, council. It's a pleasure to be here.
Oh, sorry, there's a, there's a switch. Okay. Tonight, we wanted to just briefly introduce you to our new website. And so I'm going to just turn the time right over to Joe and go ahead and walk us through what you've, what your team has put together, Joe.
Okay, first, I would like to see on the screen, you'll see our current website. We'll kind of quickly revisit where we're at. Not a lot of pictures, a lot of text, pretty busy. So, jumping over to the new website, you can see it's a lot cleaner look. I think it's much more organized than the old site. We have, we have dropdown, what they call mega menus now. No trying to keep the menu on the screen while you're selecting. It's pretty easy to maneuver through. We have some quick links at the top and a few changeable quick links at the bottom that we'll probably be making changes to as we go through the process when we see any hot topics or anything we want to use those for. If there's anything the council would like for me to demo, I'll be glad to do that. And I have a brief con, little presentation of what we went through to get to this point. For our redesign, if you'll remember, the first time I was here, the objectives as they were stated when Mr. Bacon was here and reinforced by Mr. Foggan was we wanted to get out with the old information, in with the new. The biggest, I think the biggest problem with the old site was stale information. So, we're addressing that by having the new site be updatable, if that's a word, by the departments themselves, and they take us out of the picture. They can go ahead and handle their updates themselves. So, we're going through training with those departments. The other things were, we wanted to market it, use it as a marketing tool to visitors, residences, and businesses. And I think if you look at how we've set this up, besides government, we have residents, business, and visitors that we're really aiming this for. So, it's, it's in a sense targeted from the very main page. So, what we did, and I think we alluded to this in the last time I was up here, was we were going to get a group of people from our boards and commissions to volunteer to go through the site and kind of vet it, as it were, from the outside in, since we're always inside looking out and we know this information. And that's what we did. We got this group of people, Jordan Cummings, Wayne Hollins, Barb Sharon, Nikki Seegers, Shawn Walsh, Jim Hinckley, Hannah Hayden, Amelia Brackett, Lori DeVries, and Terry Hunziker. I sent them emails and links to the site. And I, I have a good feeling that everybody looked through it. Some people didn't have comments, but I did get comments back. And I'll paraphrase some of these here. Hannah Hayden said, "I looked over the website, enjoyed it far more than the current website. I think it looks better and is easier to navigate." Wayne Hollins, "The agendas are easier to locate on the new website and it appears easier to negotiate." And Amelia Brackett, who is on the Youth Advisory Commission, said, "The new website's easy to, it has easy navigation and the page layout is more appealing. It's clean, modern, and has better usability." So, we're hoping to roll this out next Monday on the 11th. Some of that depends on vision internet, the people we selected. If they can get it put into a production site in time, we're ready to go. But in the meantime, we're going to keep going through it, churning it, working with the departments to get it ready, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions of staff?
Yes, could you show us the business side again? I'm just wondering if I, no, well, put in a search engine for business license. I'm just wondering how easy it'll be for somebody to get one.
In the search?
In the search.
The search, I'll just tell you, it's a very slow process right now. It's still on a production, it's not on a non-production site. It's on a development site.
If you just check business, then let's see how that is.
It's there, to the left.
And so, chamber, is our economic, where's our economic development?
Economic development and also the airport specifically. We have domain names that we've reserved for those that will take you directly to here, just like we do with the police or fire. You can, KingmanPolice.com takes you directly to their webpage on this site. We'll do the same with those. So, you can get to it directly or you can come to this general city page and get to it also. So, we're working with Gary Kellogg to get that information on there now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Please. When the department heads update, I'm wondering how many people are going to have access to it? And who's going to do the auditing in terms of correct spelling, updating information to ensure it's current, using the right fonts, using the right artwork, whatever. Who's going to be doing that auditing?
That's a good question. That was a shared concern. I think in talking to Mr. Foggan, the position that we have in the future for the graphics designer will probably have overall editing functions of the, or publishing functions of this. The people in the departments will be editors. It's a pretty granular system that you can set up so that they can actually edit this information at the department level and pass it up for publishing by the designated publisher.
Is there going to be a lot of city staff that has access to update the website?
They'll only have specific access to their pages. So, there's either one or two people in each department is all. And, and there's a chain that we can see who did what at what time, if that ever becomes an issue. But I, I don't expect anything nefarious to happen, but we'll know.
No, I don't either. It's just people get busy and there's misspellings that don't get picked up and those kinds of things. My last question is, cosmetically, is the website design, like the landing page, is that final? Is that how it's going to remain?
This right here?
The, the, correct, that page.
Yes, this is it. And one of the suggestions, I think it came from Ms. Brackett, was that we don't keep this picture on here. We put it on carousel like we had in the other. And we're putting that in place too. But yes, this page as it exists here is the actual site.
My, my honest opinion is that I think the website, while functionally it's going to be awesome, cosmetically, to me, it appears dated and heavy, not modern. But just like everybody else, I have an opinion and so does everybody else.
Sure. Are you talking about the, the new site, the proposed site?
Correct.
Okay. Well, to that point, one of Mr. Foggan's suggestions was that we make it even more graphical. And as we go through this, we're going to add graphics and work with the page designers to see if we can put more graphics in where we're not allowed to too. So, this isn't a final product. We realize it's a journey, not a destination.
Right.
And it'll continue to evolve. But we really want to get the new one out there as soon as possible. So, what we wanted to do is bring it up to the same level of information as the current page and then make it available to the public. And then we'll probably be getting feedback from the public too, so.
You probably will.
I'm sure we will, and it's always welcome.
Thank you very much.
You had a question?
Yeah, I'd have one question. Joe, could you go back to the business page, please? I see you have the Chamber of Commerce on there and General Plan. I'd like to request that you have a link to KAMA on there. I think that it's appropriate maybe that we would have a Kingman prospectus, some sort of a document that would be a prospectus document on our community in doing business here. And then possibly the Mojave Small Business Development Center for Entrepreneurial and Small Business Development. It'd be a good link to have. Appreciate it.
Okay, sure. And I'm sure some other things will be added. This will be fleshed out a lot when we work with Mr. Kellogg too, so.
Well, and I will interject that that's going to be a big portion of our economic development page will be to, to basically drive people to look for perspective, to, to find doing business. We want them to go to a specific, that, KingmanEconomicDevelopment.com to, to really drill down and be able to get all of that information. Because if, once we start populating this information, the habit, and, and I will speak to Councilor Cress on, in a website, the, the old website that we've been functioning under is really heavy and, and data, too much data.
Correct.
And so, what we're going to try to do is make it, and I will say that Joe and his team used best practices in basically taking info, or views and graphics and kind of formats from best practice websites and developing ours. But the idea is to drive as many of people that are interested in doing business to our economic development website and not trying to populate our, our main website with just a bunch of, a bunch of information. Because that, that, too much information is the same as not enough information. And so, we're going to keep that in mind as we, as we try to push the economic development page to people.
Follow-up to that, Manager Foggan. Do you see having two websites as being confusing for somebody that's not from here? If they type in City of Kingman, is that going to be confusing for them?
We'll have a link that says economic development or doing business. So, there'll be, the idea for a website is really to have, to, to be able to get the same information multiple times, having, being able to click to it. And so, whether you search economic development for Kingman or if you just go to the Kingman website, the point is, is to be able to drive, to be able to have them click and drive them to that economic development website. And so, it's, we're trying to make it as easy as possible and, and find that people can find it really easy. But, but not to have too much information in one spot, so.
One more fine, follow-up question to that. From an outside business perspective, will I be able to get to economic development data and demographics and all that stuff in three clicks or less?
Yes, yes, you will.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Well, thank you for your efforts today. It's really done a remarkable job of making this so much more user-friendly. We look forward to the rollout.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item two, renaming of city streets?
Yes, and I don't have a lot to say on this. I'm going to turn the time right over to Greg, so.
You don't even know all the names of the streets?
I don't even know all the names.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The reason this, this item is on the work session tonight is there was a council action at the January 16th meeting. Staff had received a request to name a street. It was Adam Street, in fact. And staff was recommending denial of that request because there was a segment of Adam Street to the south of the requested area and continued north of the requested area as well. So, as, our policy typically does not allow that type of request. And it's also a concern with our 911 system. So, that was the reason for that item back. It was Mr. Gary Bowles was requesting to name a portion of Adam Street to Dollar Hyde. And at the meeting, council agreed with that and council ultimately denied that request. But there was, there was a request from the council to bring this back and discuss some more. So, I've attached our, our current policy. And maybe at, at this point, we're just looking for council to say, "That policy looks good as is." Or if there's something that need, that council thinks we need to add, we can do that. But policy states, "Names for new streets shall be consistent with natural alignment and extensions of existing streets." So, in other words, if we receive a new subdivision that has ABC Street to the, the east of it and ABC Street, a continuation of that same street to the west, then we would expect the developer to name his street that would naturally align that to ABC Street, so on and so forth, north and south. We also say, we shall not duplicate in whole or part or be confused with any existing street names within the area. So, we don't want to have two main streets, one where it currently exists and one downtown or something like that. So, it's, it's just a fairly simple policy. We go on to say that north-south streets shall be designation of street. East-west shall have avenue. There's some information on cul-de-sacs and we say that arterials may be called either a road or a boulevard. Essentially, that's what we want to do is just, just give you our policy and see if there's any direction at this point to proceed or, or carry on further.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff at this time? Well, I will tell you, I, I did contact the county and ask what their policy is on renaming streets. And it's quite a process for both staff and eventually the property owners. So, I personally am very comfortable leaving this policy as is right now. Any other thoughts from council?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Moving on to item number three, the water rate study.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is really a continuation of our April 17th work session where we talked about water rates. And we talked about a couple of different rate options. And the one that we were really looking at was funding $5 million a year in our annual, in our CIP program. And with that, it was about a five and a half percent revenue increase. Well, capital tended to be the focus of that particular work session item. And so, we were directed to go back out and maybe come back with another option that might increase the annual funding to more than $5 million. And just come back and see what that option might look like, the revenue impacts as well as the rate impact to the user. So, tonight, we have our consultants back, Pat Walker and Kevin Burnett with Wildon Financial to provide you with a comparison of what that seven and a half million dollars per year in funding capital projects looks like versus the $5 million in funding capital projects. So, I'll ask them to approach.
There you are. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're going to go over some of the items that we went over the last time we saw you in April, just as a refresher and for the public purposes, on why you do a rate study. So, we're going to talk about the purpose of a rate study, the summary, the proposed revenue increase, financial plan summary, a proposed rates, and then some comparisons. So, whoops, we're going a little bit too fast ahead. There we go. Again, the purpose of the study in a simplistic form is to say, "How much expenditures do you have? How much revenues do you bring in to cover the expenditures?" You have to look at though, on a future basis, not just at where you're at today, but where you're going with your capital projects, your debt service, if you're going to issue any debt, your reserves, capital replacement, things like that. So, that's why you look five years out. We want to make sure that you're meeting your minimum reserve requirements. That's where you have that contingency reserve in the event there's emergency expenditures or revenue shortfalls. And so, you want to develop rates that are going to be sufficient to cover the cost of providing the essential services of running the water system and, in the same time, be able to encourage conservation, which sometimes can go against each other because the more people conserve, the less revenue you bring in. So, you have to have that balance in there. But you save in the long-term on capital that way. So, the consultant team, being myself and, and my partner and project manager is Kevin Burnett with Wildon Financial Services. And we work side by side with Tina and staff in Public Works on looking at the ongoing and maintenance costs. That's the first basis that we have to do. And then what capital needs, as Tina referred to, as far as the capital projects needed for the future over the next five years. One of the things we always like to point out, because it can be confusing, is that there's a big difference between a revenue increase and a rate increase. A revenue increase is looking at how much revenue you need to generate from the system as a whole to pay the bills. So, you might need like 3% if you gave across the board or 5% across the board. That's a revenue increase. A rate increase is an impact to an individual. So, there may be a 5% rate increase, but it might affect some people less than 5% and others more, depending on the tier structure that you have for the rate increase that we'll be going into. And again, it's not necessarily going to be the same. So, it's very important to communicate to the customers and to the public that, that difference between a revenue increase and a rate increase. So, why are, why are we doing this study? What was the purpose? Well, you haven't really had a review of rates, not been undertaken since 2008. That's a long time. That's 10 years that you haven't looked at it. You have increasing operational costs, repair and maintenance of the system. And then you have targeted reserve levels that haven't been met that you want to meet for the future moving forward to maintain financial sustainability in your water fund. So, what we did is we looked at, last time we looked at the $10 million option, which was option A. Then we looked at the $5 million option in, in the CIP. And there was a question about, well, what about expansion and what are we doing in expansion? And one of the things that we wanted to point out is the developers are responsible for onsite expansion related capital needs specific to their development. They're required to put that in. So, there's a lot of expansion going on that they're responsible for. But the staff went back and really looked at all the projects and what was needed. And you should have that list in front of you on what is expansion projects versus things that have to be done to maintain the system moving forward. So, with seven and a half million CIP versus the 10, it brought down that rate increase, but it's still a big number at 45%, 35%, 2, 2, and 2. And then looking at the cash reserve levels of a 90-day target, you're not meeting the target for the first year. You are in the subsequent years. And then you kind of tail off and get a little bit closer to the target reserve versus the projected. The reason for the increase is, and the next slide, I just kind of want to point this out to you, is option B. If you did option B, it's 5.5%, 5.5553. And the question is, well, how did we go from $5 million to $7.5 million and we're from 5.5% to 45%? And that's because for every $1 million of CIP that you add, you need a 15% rate increase. So, that's why there's that difference in there. That's for the cash to be able to flow. If you did financing, that would be different. You would be able to maybe level off because you don't need the cash upfront if you're, if you're financing. But, and it's also based on cash flow. Could that other one be smoothed out a little bit depending on timing of those projects? Yes, but at the end of the day, you still need the same amount. You might compound it. You have lower rates and you compound on top of it. There's a million ways we can do it. But the bottom line is, is if that's the main difference between a $5 million and a $7.5 million CIP. If I could go the right way. So, we have proposed changes to rate structures and applies to both financial plans. We have two options. One is a three-tier with revised thresholds, meaning the amount of gallons per tier. And then we have a four-tier with revised thresholds, but it also includes what they call lifeline rate, a basic rate for the amount of water that you use, lower level, and it goes up to that certain amount. Kevin will be going over that in more detail. Non-residential has a uniform rate as does irrigation and hydrant. And with that, I'll let Kevin go over the actual charges in the model.
Thanks, Pat. I do want to circle back and just make a couple of other points on this slide before we move into the rates themselves. So, as Pat mentioned, one of the objectives that we had in this study was a conserva, more conservation-oriented rate structure. Right now, you do have a three-tiered rate structure, which by definition is a conservation-oriented rate structure. The more you use, the higher the unit price is for that water. At the same time, when we looked at the billing data, what it told us was 99% of your customers fall within the first two tiers. So, for Pat and I who work in this industry, that tells us, yes, you do have a conservation-oriented rate structure. But when 99% fall in the first two tiers, you're giving too much water away in those first two tiers to be a real strong conservation-oriented rate structure. The other thing is, right now, you've got, the, the tiered thresholds do apply to non-residential customers as well as residential customers. So, one of the changes that we're recommending is towards the industry trend, which is a uniform rate structure for, for non-residential customers. And there's a couple of reasons for that. The first one being, there's less opportunity for conservation on the non-residential side as compared to the residential side. There's more opportunity for discretionary water use on the residential side. Non-residential customers, they're in the business of making money. One of the ways that they're going to make money is to minimize their expenses. So, they're going to try and be as efficient as they can in their water use to begin with. The other factor that we look at is, when you look at residential customers as a whole, the usage patterns are fairly typical across the board. On the non-residential side, you could have a small mom and pop store with just a bathroom in it is a non-residential customer. You could also have, a car wash is a non-residential customer class. Trying to develop a tiered rate structure that is equitable to both of those customers within the same customer class without saying, "Okay, we're going to have non-residential customer class A, customer class B, customer, you know, et cetera, down the line." So, just wanted to give you a little bit more background on that. So, as we get into what the, the op, rate options are in, in terms of the rates themselves, so we're not proposing changes to the rate structure itself per se. So, you're still going to have the monthly base charge, you're still going to have a volume component, and you're still going to have a capital renewal fee. So, what we're showing right now is the more aggressive option that Pat mentioned, the $7.5 million CIP. So, you would see the inside-city base rate go from $7.21 now to $9.90, then up to 14, 36, 1464. And it slows down a little bit there following the financial plan Pat mentioned. On the capital renewal fee, again, the big jump in the first year from 375 to 554, another big jump in the second year, and then it, it levels out a little bit at that point. In terms of the volume component, so on the left, you can see your current rate structure there. There's that 0 to 10, 10 to 45, and greater than 45. So, one of the changes that we're proposing was, we looked at your billing data and said, "What does the average customer use in the winter?" That's their indoor, primarily indoor water use. It's what you need for cooking, for cleaning, doing dishes, laundry, showers, et cetera. And it came in right around 7,000 gallons, 7.5 thousand gallons a month. So, we said, "We'll round that up to 8,000 and make that your indoor allotment." And then we said, "What's a reasonable outdoor discretionary water use allotment?" And that got us to the, to the 20,000 threshold, down from 45. So, then the third tier would be greater than 20. And then you can see the rates that are associated with that. Another option that staff wanted to see was, well, what if we have the stereotypical person who lives alone? They're in their house by themselves. They don't have a big lot. They don't have a lot of, of indoor water use. Can we do something to help them out? So, we come up with the lifeline tier, as we're calling it. So, it's a 0 to 3.5 thousand gallons and then 3.5 thousand to 8, 8 to 20, and then greater than 20. So, you can see the 0 to 3.5 is a little bit lower than what the 0 to 8 is under option 1. And then the 3.5 to 8 is a little bit higher than option 1, just to make up the difference between the two there. Under option B, so in this case, we've got, the base rate is actually going down a little bit from where it is today. And that's trying to do some shifting between the, the base charge now and encouraging conservation. So, we shifted more of the revenue burden to the volume rate so that we can send that conservation signal and recoup more there. And then we have the same type of, of alternatives here for option B, which is the less aggressive, the $5 million CIP plan. So, the, the three-tier option that's been revised and then the additional tier for the lifeline, lifeline rate option. This is a breakdown of where your customers fall on the residential side. So, as you can see, as I said before, under your current rate structure, the first two tiers, you're picking up 99% of your customers. Even with the revised rate structures that we've got under option 1, the 0 to 8,000 gallons, you're picking up 76% of your customer use. And then another 18 in that. you're picking up 76% of your customer use, and then another 18 in that revised tier. And then we've got the same approach that we took for outside-city limits. We do have a differential for inside versus outside, and it's based on the capital needs inside the city versus outside the city. That was what we used as the basis to say it costs more to serve those outside-city customers, so they should have to pay a higher rate. A similar, similar approach to the customer distribution outside city as inside city, a little bit more in that first tier under the outside-city customers than, than the inside, but a similar distribution nonetheless. And then, as Pat mentioned earlier on in the presentation, the rate increase doesn't necessarily translate to a revenue increase and vice versa. So here, we've got the non-residential rates. So we've got the, the $2.18 currently, and we're proposing that would go up to $3.61 under Option A, the more aggressive scenario. So it's a fair bit more aggressive on the non-residential side. Option B, it would be going from $2.18 to $2.64 inside city, and then outside city from $2.95 to $3.11. And then the irrigation inside city, right now, you've got a two-tiered structure, 0 to 200, greater than 200. We're proposing it just be a uniform rate, which is somewhere in between the current two rates you have right now. In terms of the customer impacts, so this is again, looking at Option A, the, the more aggressive approach, so it has a fairly significant impact on the customer base for the residential customers. Even at the low, the average, and the high, you're seeing a pretty, pretty significant increase there. When we go to the five and a half approach, the Option B, you'll see, a low-volume customer would see about a 2.3% increase. Your average customer at that 7,000 gallon level is going to be at 2.6%. And then the higher-volume user at 25,000 is going to be an 8.7% increase. And again, that's part of the conservation signal that we're trying to send, that the more water you use, the more expensive it is to the city, and you should have to pay the higher costs associated with, with serving you there. And then we've got the same, same type of thing for the, the four-tier structure. So the lifeline rate gives that little bit more of a break even to the low-volume user at 3,000 gallons, and then it gets picked up by the higher-volume user there. And then we also looked at, well, what does this mean for the 20 largest customers that we have? And they were all, the 20 largest at non-residential rates. So we've got what their current bill would be, what their bill would be under Option A, and then what their bill would be under Option B. So we've got the first 10 there, and then the second 10. So again, much more impact, obviously, under Option A than Option B, because the rate increases are that much more significant. And then we've got the hydrant customers. So we've only got Option B shown here. We can certainly come back and show you what Option A is, but it's going to be more, more severe than what we have right in there. So with that, I want to turn it back over to Pat, and she's got some, some finishing comments about comparisons for us.
May I ask you a quick question on that very last slide, please?
Yeah.
Regarding the hydrant customers?
Yeah.
Why is that so much significantly higher, more impactful than all the other increases that you're proposing?
It's, it's the volume of water itself. So right now, you have, a hydrant customer would have their first 200,000 gallons at $2.42, and then above, 200,000 gallons would be at $3.64. Under the Option B proposal that we've got here, all of their use would be at $3.28. So whereas before, the first 200,000 gallons would be cheaper, and the last 50,000 would be more expensive, now we've got it all going at the same rate.
Okay.
So that pulls up the total.
Thank you for that. Appreciate that. Yes, yes. Another question as well?
Before we leave, because of the significant difference in these two proposals, I have to go back, and I, I don't remember if you covered this in your first presentation a few months ago, but are our current rates competitive with other cities? Are we below, because we haven't looked at it in 10 years? How do we stand with respect to, you know, other cities that are comparable?
Without stepping on Pat's toes too much, because that's what she's going to present, right now, you are more competitive with your neighbors than you would be under the more aggressive seven and a half million.
The, the Option B would make us more competitive?
Option B is, Option B keeps you pretty close to where you're at today, so you would still maintain that same relative competitiveness with your, with your neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, but if we go with Option A?
Yes.
We are not competitive anymore.
You are less competitive with your neighbors than you are today. There are a myriad of factors that I'll let Pat expand upon here, so it's hard for us to say definitively, yes, you are going to be competitive, or no, you're not, because there's a lot of other factors that go into it.
Right. Thank you.
It's a good segue, Mayor and Council.
Anyone else?
Because it really is something that we don't like to do, as I, as I mentioned last time, but it's something that's always asked. How are we against other communities in the area? And there are a lot of different things that affect what type of water system you have. It can be the geographic location. Do you have to have more pumps to pump it? Or is there the size of the treatment facilities? Are they bigger, are they smaller? The customer base, the age of the assets? A bunch of other things go into the cost of service, and when you're looking at the water rates. Site-specific regulatory requirements, somebody maybe have some citations that you guys don't have, and so that goes into the cost of service and, and the rates. So there's a lot of difference on it, type of water supply, and then the quality of the water supply. So it's very hard to say exactly unless you break everything down on those components and say, are we exactly comparing the right community to what we have? And the answer is, when you get to the numbers, yeah, you can compare the numbers, but you don't have all the information to make sure that it's an apples-to-apples comparison. That's all we want to warn you about. So with that being said, here is the comparison to the neighbors, and just exactly what you say when you look at Option A, I mean, I'm sorry, Option B, the lower amount, the 5 million CIP, you can see you're at the low end of the scale. Currently, Laughlin is a little bit below you, but then there's Kingman, the current fees, and then you go to Option B with the tiers, and then B3 with the tiers, the different four-tier structure versus a three-tier structure. When you get into Option A, to the right, you can see that you get up closer to those higher ones. Bullhead City's still at 46.85, Prescott, 47.11, Flagstaff, 48.18. And even with the seven and a half million, you're, you're right there, not too far off from Prescott Valley, but you're higher than Lake Havasu City. So that's the comparisons we were asked to do, and this is based on a residential bill, three-quarter inch meter, using 7,000 gallons of water as an average on that. So the next steps that we have in the process, and we follow the statute Arizona 951101, in addition to wanting to reach out to the public and get their input and thoughts on the rate increase, you also are going to be going back to the Utility Commission and getting a recommendation to council. And then the next step in the process, according to the statute, is to adopt a notice of intent and set public hearing date. Right now, we're targeting September for that. Once you do the notice of intent, then that's when the clock starts ticking on the 60-day notice, and then you have a public hearing at the council meeting. You have to post a report at least 30 days, but we'll be posting the report way before then. And then your rate increase after, if it's approved, doesn't go into effect until 30 days after the approval. So with that, I'll open it up for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. I have one question, and this might be for staff. When you talk about the public outreach, I'm wondering, are we going to make an effort to reach out to those, those businesses that you listed that will be most impacted by this increase? I, I notice a lot of them are essentially minimum wage employer-type businesses. This could be very, very detrimental. This, I mean, this is going to impact their business.
That'll be our very first public outreach. Will be to those certain businesses, as well as some of the certain organizations, such as Kama and the Chamber also. And then we will hold public outreach meetings for just citizens in general.
Thank you. Other questions of staff?
I do have a question. Tina, under Option B, we don't have enough revenue to sufficiently fund all of the projects on the five-year CIP. So under Option B, will staff revise the five-year CIP to reflect the actual projects that the city will be able to fund? And if so, how will those projects be ranked in priority?
So under Option B is the $5 million per year, which currently, we have funded under that. We're, for our five-year CIP from 19 to 23, we're actually funding, I want to say, just about $23 million. So we will, we can afford to fund the projects that are identified in the five, almost the projects that are identified in the $5 million plan. Is that what you're asking, Councilman?
So Option B, will, will be able to fund all of the, the projects in the five-year CIP?
In the five-year CIP.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, that's probably worth also talking about the opportunity. The consultants, as they started, had suggested that we look at perhaps bond, doing some bonding, that would also allow us to be able to fit all those projects in, and we'll be able to stagger them in, in a way that, that we could cover. It, it looks like, anyway, that we could cover all of the five-year capital projects fairly, fairly easily. If, as long as we have the right revenue mix to pay for bonding, then, then we'd be able to do that, so, pretty easily.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Appreciate your report. Moving on to item four, on-street parking regulations.
And as Lee's walking up, I'll just let you know, this was, Vice Mayor Miles requested this. Probably a few months ago, we looked at it and then brought it back. He's worked with the abatement team, with PD, and the Planning and Zoning Department to come up with a draft, and kind of want you guys to look at it, see if there's things in your like, you don't like, and if we need to, to make some more adjustments. So Lee's here to answer your questions.
Right. Thank you. And, right, we were asked to address recreational vehicle parking in residential areas. And just as a preface, going through the city ordinances, we have a couple of ordinances that sort of, kind of touch on that, but are not comprehensive. We do have Section 7-77.1 that addresses prohibiting commercial parking on residential streets. That's an ordinance from 1991, so it's kind of dated. We have another one that's very broad, Section 7-80, which addresses camping on municipal and commercial property. That addresses trailers and campers, but it's very broad. It also addresses indigent folks that might try to camp on the sidewalk or in alleys, things like that. And we cite that very heavily, the Kingman Police Department does. That's not something we want to change. So what we've submitted is a draft. It's titled 7-77.2. That's kind of a placeholder title, kind of a working title. If, if council were to accept this as written, I would envision this sort of overlaying the existing 7-77.1, because it's very similar, it covers the same topics, and basically, the language is updated. So I would, I would take this and overlay it over 7-77.1, but we would leave 7-80 alone, because, like I said, that's heavily cited. That addresses problems beyond RV parking on residential streets. And so basically, what we have in 7-77.2, the proposed version, it's in three sections. We address the storage and parking of commercial vehicles in residential zoning districts. We address in the second section, Section B, unoccupied, non-commercial recreational vehicles, and then in Section C, the storage and parking of occupied vehicles. And we've talked to Rich Ruggles, the chief, and I, to make sure this is enforceable, and it appears to be. So we just need, just guidance and input as to what council would like as far as what we submitted.
Well, this is, this is your, your item. So go ahead. First, I just want to thank you. I think this is what I was looking for when I asked that this come forth to the council, and I certainly hope that the council will take this forward. This is a health and safety issue for our community. I first brought it up last year, after we had a unfortunate death of a young boy in our community due to not being, not having visibility behind a motorhome. So it's very important, I think, that we take action on this and move it forward. And if I understand you correctly, this is based on best practices from other cities. It does allow for loading and unloading, and for unoccupied RVs to be in front of a place for three days, and, and it has accommodation for those things that really do take place with these, these vehicles.
I wrote this maybe two or three years ago, and we've had it sort of in storage ever since, in case it needed to be used. I don't remember writing it, but I do remember consulting other cities' codes. I don't remember what cities I consulted, but we, I did consult other cities.
Well, my goodness, I, I wish it had been in effect last year. So for myself, I'm very thankful to see it. I'd like, I'd like for us to move forward with it to council, if that is the council's wish. The reality is that the vehicle that was causal in last year's accident is still sitting there, and, and still presents a safety concern. So I think these are things that, though anecdotal, we've all seen it, as we go up and down the streets, and we see a lot of children in these residential areas, and, and the limit, this just has limited visibility as it stands now. So that's why I'm glad to see it. Thank you.
You know, I absolutely agree that you do see these recreational vehicles, boats parked in front of homes. And this has been happening for years. We're talking about old, established neighborhoods. I, I just, for the life of me, can't envision where now we're going to force our community to move their, their recreational vehicles, their boats, their trailers, when they have nowhere else to put them. I understand restrictions in new neighborhoods. I just don't see where this is tenable moving forward. But that's, that's my personal opinion.
And I'd have to, to defer that to Rich, more of the planning and zoning side. I, I don't know if it's tenable or not, so.
Understood. Other questions or comments?
I, I would agree, while in philosophy, and I do agree with Vice Mayor Miles, but in reality, where are people going to park their stuff?
Well, my, my opinion is that they may have to park it in storage areas. I lived on a street that was heavily populated for years, and I, I've had personal experiences with this, and with people parking it, you know, in areas that really do cause safety concerns. And so I think it's time to take action. And at, at one point, there were commercial vehicles parking on these residential streets, and I'm talking streets we all know, and I would watch these children, or I would try to get in and out of my driveway, and find it very difficult to see what was going on. I just think that is not a safe environment for children, and so that is why I feel that it should go forth.
I definitely appreciate what you're saying, and certainly, no one is minimizing the tragedy that occurred, but, but frankly, it was that. It, it was a tragedy, and I don't know that we can legislate our, our way or impose more restrictions on, on residents. It's already, when they have small yards, they have their, their vehicles, those are purchased, maybe a storage unit isn't in the budget. I, I just, I also remember when this was discussed previously, going some months back, I personally received a lot of feedback from community members, and I didn't get one comment. Of course, that's not unusual, but not one comment was in support of this restriction.
Well, I have had comments in support of this, and so I guess that it depends on, you know, if you're the person that is concerned about, about the safety and health of these children. I, I know we're all saying we are, but I really believe that, that it does present a problem, and there are solutions that people have. And this is not restricted to all vehicles, just those that are large and above a certain size, so, above a certain weight. So it's not like a lot of things would be restricted, just those that are very large. Thank you. Other comments, questions?
I think I'd just like to at least see it moved, advanced for further consideration to the point where the public would at least have an opportunity to weigh in on the matter here in front of us.
Thank you. That's a good idea. Any other comments?
I just had a question that might not be answerable, but I was just wondering what impact this ordinance would have, like, if we have any idea as to what percentage of the residents do have vehicles parked out front that, that are almost permanently or, of the residents do have, uh, vehicles parked out front that, that are almost permanently, you know, parked right out front.
The, the only thing I can tell you is, from a law enforcement perspective, uh, what we've drafted is enforceable. Whether it's tenable, what the numbers are, I have absolutely no idea. I'd have to defer to other departments. I, I don't, I, I don't have the answer to that.
Other questions yet, a comment? Councilmember Lincoln felt?
Yeah, I do. So this is, this is, um, twenty-two foot in length or longer, right? Is what it says here?
Yes.
So, I guess I kind of find it hard to believe that somebody would buy a twenty-two foot long or longer vehicle and not know how, not have a place to store it on their property. Uh, so, are they not already required to, to put it on their side yard?
Again, I'm going to have to defer to, to Rich or Rusty, so.
And can I just comment on, when I think the twenty-two foot is the commercial? That's trying to address the, uh, tow trucks. So, that's under subsection, that's A1, under the commercial section.
Okay.
When you go down to the, uh, B, it's just non-commercial recreational vehicles, truck, campers. It's defining those as trailers and recreational vehicles, not by size, by category, but also when you're talking about, uh, the zoning with, out, I believe that they, they need to be parked behind a site-restricted fence currently
Yeah.
in the side yard. So that means you can't park it in the front yard or the front side yard, but it has to be in the side yard behind the face of the house or the backyard.
That's already, it's already, what you're telling me is, it's already covered in zoning, it's just not being, it's not, we don't have anything to enforce.
It's covered in zoning for parking on their property. So, the reason it's not being enforced is, it is perfectly legal to park these vehicles on the street. So, what happens a lot of times is, law enforcement, when the neighbors complain, instead of advising them, well, you can't park it in your driveway and you don't have room, just park it on the street. So generally, the option is, let them park it in the driveway to keep it off the street.
Is there any precedent for setting size standards on recreational vehicles?
I, one, I don't think I noticed any, I know when Lee and I had done some of that research, but then you're going to start talking about the enforcement issues. So, it's easy enough for law enforcement, and I hate to speak for them, they know what it is, but if they're going to have to start going out, weighing, measuring the size, whatever else, that's going to take, uh, a longer time for them to enforce those issues, so.
Well, I know the argument will be made that I have a little fishing boat versus I have a twenty-six-foot RV, you know, parked in front of my house. They are different, so there, I'm wondering if there could be an accommodation, and maybe that's why bringing it to a public hearing and letting people speak to it.
And I guess my only question, sorry to take away from Lee, because he was doing such a good job, is, you want to make sure you're, if you're going to differentiate, you need to definitely explain why you're differentiating it, because someone's going to come in and go, well, my boat's a boat, why is your boat different? You know, profile, height, everything else is going to jump into that mix, so.
I'm certainly not, um, wanting to create, recreate a wheel. I, I mean, if there's other communities out there that have already done something along those lines, I'd like to know about it myself, just, just more data for myself.
I'm sure we can, we can go look.
Any other questions of staff?
I imagine there, there would be, there likely would be precedent of boats or ATVs that are the, generally the size of what, a car. I, I think that that would be an argument to be made, is, well, if it's not restricting the, the, I guess, the view more than a car would, why, you know, why would we restrict something like that arbitrarily? One other question I had, uh, it deals with the, you know, if there's, if there, you mentioned that there was already a, a law in place or, um, an ordinance in place restricting people from parking, uh, these items on their own driveways. If we were to remove them from the roads is, for purposes of public safety, you know, I imagine they're, they're just as much of an eyesore on the road as they are in somebody's driveway. Is that, is that the reason what, behind the, that ordinance, or?
I, that ordinance predates me, but I believe that's the general rule, is why they're not allowed in the driveway, is the, the typical eyesore issue, to avoid the neighborhood clutter, which is generally why you're parking it behind a site-restricted fence on the side or the back of the house.
Right, but if they're to, if they are avoiding that by parking it in front of their house, it seems almost worse, like, like that's counterproductive, in terms of the, the underlying reason for not being able to park it on your own driveway.
And that's why it's here for you guys to talk about.
So I wonder if maybe, uh, a feasible alternative for purposes of, you know, public safety issues, discuss the possibility of repealing that other zoning ordinance to replace, you know, that with putting the, the boats, letting people put their things on their own prop, on, you know, on their own property and their, on their driveways, so.
Definitely an option for a council to direct, so.
Would, would that require a public hearing?
It, well, not necessarily a public hearing, but it would have to go through P and Z because it's a zoning, so. But if that's the council direction, they can.
Well, I think that has merit to look at that, because even though it can block view in the driveway, it's not as bad as it is if it's parked in front of the house. So, um, yeah, I would, I would support that.
Actually, I would just weigh in and suggest that parking, uh, RV, large boats in the driveway, uh, per the, the zoning, it, it, there is aesthetics as part of that, but there is, since we're talking about safety of, um, pedestrians, whether it be children or adults, is that a large RV trailer parked in the driveway obstructs the driver's view from backing out of their driveway. And so I, I would suggest that you're actually creating, uh, more of a safety issue by blocking the view of the drivers of people using the sidewalk than you are of having RVs and large vehicles out on this, on the street. Uh, I think there's safety issues in both directions, and so I think it's a little bit more than just aesthetics, which I, I know that the, this zoning code tries to get to, but hopefully that zoning code looked at safety of pedestrians on sidewalks as part of that as well.
And to dovetail with that, it, it just jumped in my head, I would wonder also if there's some sort of fire safety setback issue with not having a gigantic RV in between two buildings as well, so.
Well, you know, I appreciate that wisdom, and, um, it just tells me that we really do need to research this further to find out what cities are really doing, because I've seen all of these violations to ordinances that apparently we have, because I've seen them in driveways, I see them on the street, I've seen them both, and across the yard. And I just think it's time to seriously look at what is enforceable, what makes sense, and we'll, and we'll address the safety issues and the concerns of our citizens.
Has this been through Planning and Zoning Commission process?
This has not.
Is that maybe the appropriate place to start at this point?
For that aspect, if you're talking about modify, if you're, if you're talking about modifying the planning, uh, code, yeah, then you'd want to address that through that option.
Well, if I understood you correctly, that was kind of, that, that first section that you talked about, you were going to overlay this on, so maybe that is.
That was in the, that was in the city ordinances, not the zoning code, so.
Oh, not the zoning code.
Well, and perhaps part of the discussion could include, you know, when, when this is brought to the public, or when it's fleshed out in, in planning and zoning, um, could include, uh, not necessarily parking them on the driveway, as, as you pointed out, uh, Manager Fogg, and that, that does promote a, a safety concern as well, um, but, you know, maybe side yards, you, something that, from the yard, side yard.
That's what it is now.
Right, uh, discussing, you know, maybe repealing that in place, uh, well, because right now, we've got, you know, the options are your garage, your driveway, your, the front of your yard, the side of your yard.
The current option to park is the side yard or your backyard or the street currently.
Right. So I, to avoid the, the safety concerns of the driveway issue, perhaps we can also, uh, include in that discussion the front of your yard, or, or somewhere that doesn't promote that safety concern.
Perhaps it's best if we're allowed to refer this issue to the Planning and Zoning Commission, to ask them to, to collect more data specifically through the lens of public safety and to bring that back to us when they're ready.
And I would, the one thing I would note is, you're going to have, you have two tracks here, you're going to have zoning, and then you have to decide, do you still want it parked, do you still want RV parking on the street? Or do you want to ban RV parking on the street? Because those are two separate issues, but they're tied in together.
After it goes through P and Z, then we can put them.
I was going to say, would the Planning and Zoning Commission be able to work with staff to come back with, with more data with both those issues?
They could deal with the zoning issue, then the, the staff could blend, however that would work together.
That would be good.
Thank you. And any other discussion on this item? Thank you for bringing that to us this evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. And finally, investment policy update.
Okay. So, I wanted to bring this particular item to the table. Um, first of all, uh, do we even know that we have an investment policy and that we're even going to be updating it? And so I thought it might be important for me, before I request an action item on our investment policy, to bring forth what our current investment policy looks like and what we might want to change in that investment policy. So, a little bit of history, quickly, on why I brought this item, um, to the table. Some time ago, I was notified by our bank that they were no longer going to be, um, offering an overnight sweep program, meaning that a portion of our monies that exceed a certain dollar amount were not going to be earning any sort of interest. And so as soon as that happened, I thought, well, goodness, we need to do something with that money. We're not earning much, but we need to do something. And so we have investments with brokers and we have investments with estate pools. So I thought, all right, well, we need to transfer that money to one of those investment programs. And so I started looking through our investment policies and noticed that, yes, we do have one, but in looking at it, um, although it definitely has, um, some language in it that meets, uh, some of the best practices, um, I would say that I was not comfortable in doing anything with our public monies, um, based on the existing investment policy. And so I had reached out to Paulina Wu, who is, um, works at an investment firm, uh, PFM actually, um, and asked her to help me develop an investment policy. And, uh, she reached out and pulled investment policies from her clients' cities, as well as looking at some of, um, some cities that I, I myself have reached out to. And so we pulled all of this data together, pulled out all of the best practices that GFOA, uh, provides, and then put together an update. And so that's why it, this agenda item is at the table tonight. So real quickly, the purpose of an update, of course, is that, first of all, an investment policy should be reviewed and updated periodically to ensure that it complies with Arizona revised statutes, to ensure that we're incorporating the latest industry best practices, being sure that we're reflecting our city's risk tolerances and goals, and that it's clear and comprehensive. And not every policy has to be comprehensive. Um, however, when we're talking about investing millions of dollars of the public monies, it needs to be comprehensive. And so, um, that is the purpose of an update. So the city's investment objectives currently, and city's investment objectives statewide and probably nationwide are safety, ensuring the preservation of our capital, liquidity, and last, but not least, but certainly last, is yield. And I want to make that very clear, because of course we want to put our money to work, but the two most important investment objectives are safety and liquidity. Yield is our last consideration. So the summary of our proposed revisions, well, you have a copy in your agenda packet of our current policy and what our proposed policy, or what I'm requesting to, um, update anyhow. So a summary of those revisions is, of course, the format. The format is completely different. Um, and then some better defined sections. So in our existing policy, we do have a scope, we've got a general objective, standards of care, and suitable unauthorized investments, but they are much better defined in the, the proposed investment policy. There are also some new sections, authorized securities brokers and dealers. Well, we need to be sure that we're vetting the security brokers and dealers that we, um, want to receive recommendations from, and so that lists, the new policy lists what that vetting process looks like. Also competitive prices, competitive transactions, we don't want to just take one price from a broker-dealer, we want to price it out if that's the direction that we go. Safekeeping and custody, I'll come back to. Um, investment parameters, diversification, looking at maximum maturities, those are things that need to be defined, as well as reporting. Have I ever provided an investment report to you? No, and I need to be doing that, and so that is included in our investment poli, in the investment policy update as well. And then, of course, policy considerations and approval authority. You need to be making those changes to the investment policy, any sort of modifications, you need to approve those, as well as, um, how often it needs to be reviewed, and what happens if we happen to purchase a security that's over the maximum maturity that's identified in the policy? What do we do about that? And then last, but definitely not least, and probably one of the most important sections, is safekeeping and custody. So, uh, best practices state that our assets should be, um, as far as keeping them at a broker-dealer versus keeping them at, at a third-party custodian, that those functions should be different, meaning that if we are purchasing securities from a broker-dealer, they should not be also holding our assets. Our assets should be held at a third-party custodian, where they are in the city's name and not in the broker-dealer's name. We do not currently do that, and so that probably, out of all of this, is one of the most important pieces. And yes, there is a fee involved with that, anywhere between maybe forty-two hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars a year. However, I think that's a very small price to pay when we're talking about, um, mitigating risk and safekeeping the city's assets. So those are the new sections. So the next steps would be that I would request to come back and bring back an updated investment policy for you to approve, basically the one that I have provided in the packet, and then also, once approved, move our investable assets that are held at the broker-dealer into a third-party custodian to where we know that we are mitigating our risk and safekeeping our assets. And so with that, I will try to answer any questions, and I have Paulina Wu here to help, um, in case I can't answer all of the questions this evening.
Well, thank you so much for bringing this to us. I think this is a, a great step forward. Uh, having said that, are there questions from staff, starting, Councilmember Chris?
When you met, pardon me, when you mentioned the forty-two hundred to ten thousand per year, does that include both the custodian and the broker fees estimate?
So that includes, um, includes a certain number of trades, transactions per month. It also includes the custody fee, correct?
Thank you.
Question?
Yeah, I have a question. Tina, I, I like the, what I'm seeing in the new recommended policy, but what I'd like to see is, um, I think the public procurement component of this policy could be way more robust. I mean, I think we're talking about a, a lot of money here, right? And it looks like, under competitive transactions, that it, you have to get competitive quotes from a minimum of three broker-dealers. What's precluding the city from doing a formal competitive, um, request for proposals process and, and really making them, the brokers and dealers, um, submit their best deal for the citizens and then selecting accordingly?
So are you referring to actual investment management?
Whoever, whoever we work with.
So there is a difference in that. So investment management is something that Paulina and her firm actually provide, and that would require a public procurement process. We would certainly want to undergo something like that. This is basically stating that you are dedicating, um, you are delegating the authority of making the investment decisions, um, to the investment officer of the city, which is the finance director. We have pool, we have money in the pool, and we have money at a securities broker-dealer. So when I'm talking about competitive transactions, I'm saying, instead of me going to our existing securities broker and saying, hey, we've got, you know, an extra million dollars sitting here, we want to invest in some sort of asset for maybe a four-year maturity, we're not going to need that money, give me, give me some prices on a couple of assets, or a couple of investments. Instead of going to that particular one, instead, we're going to vet a few broker-dealers and say, okay, now you're going to give me this price, you know what, I'm going to reach out to you, what price are you going to give me? What price are you going to give me? So it's self-managed. If we want to go the investment management route, which really, um, in my opinion, is the, is the best route, because I am not an investment advisor, investment money and manager whatsoever, I would much rather, um, recommend investing our assets in that direction. Um, so it, does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. Uh, I still think it, we should check with more than just three companies, it just seems, um, to make sense with me. And then, and then how do we select the companies that we do work with? Do we go through a competitive request for, for proposals process?
So, we have identified in the updated investment policy, some sort of vetting process. So there's a broker dealer questionnaire. There is verification of their, being a member of the regulatory agency, Fenra, is who monitors them. As well as certain insurance coverages that they are required. And making sure that there are no disciplinary actions and that sort of thing. So that is identified in the updated investment policy.
If a company that's new, or that we haven't worked with before, wanted to get, possibly do business with the City of King, would they have an opportunity to do that? Through some sort of a process?
Yes, they absolutely would. They would just need to really reach out, is how we will be handling that process. And of course, doing reference checks and that sort of thing. That would be part of the process as well, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, may I ask, moving forward, what are you asking of, what, what are the next steps? Are you gonna bring this back to us to adopt a policy?
Yes, absolutely, in a resolution form. And then, request that we can move those investable assets, for now anyhow, to a third-party custodian.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for, for staff?
Okay, yes, thank you very much.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, we're actually going to adjourn the work session at 6:40. We'll start the regular business meeting at 7:00 PM. So having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. See you back at 7:00.
Thank you.
One minute.
Good evening. This regular meeting of the common council is now called to order. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Merle Quimby of Hilltop Four Square Church. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our God and our Father, the God of all wisdom and truth, we come before you tonight because we need your help, and we remember that when Jesus was on the cross, we were on his mind. He did so much for us, and we ask for just a little bit more. We ask for wisdom in these decisions. We ask that you bless our city and our state and our country with your great mercy, and we know, Lord, that you will because you're the true and the living God, and it's a great pleasure to know you and to serve you, and we ask your blessing now upon all these proceedings in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38430 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First item of discussion is the approval of minutes from the regular meeting of May 15, 2018. Any changes, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve any discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item two, call to the public comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. We do have one individual signed up to speak at this time. Tim Gerlach?
Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor, my name is Tim Gerlach, president of EAA Chapter and an airport user, and tonight I just very quickly wanted to report a brief update on the airport from the airport user's perspective. Usually I've been up here advocating for change and requesting help of the city council members. I know this has taken a great deal of effort on behalf of the city council and city staff. A couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of attending a meeting with other airport users with the new management team at the airport and with the interim manager, Joe Housman. It was an excellent meeting, and I have nothing but positive thoughts that come from that. Myself and many others look forward to being active partners with the new management and with the city in helping the airport reach its full potential. A reset was needed, and the council did the right thing, and I want to thank you, and there are many others in the community that thank you as well.
Thank you very much. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak at this time. Does anyone wish to address the council? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from consent agenda and will be considered separately. There are any items on the consent agenda any council member wishes to have removed for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I have several that I would like removed.
Okay.
Item A, B, C, D, G, and J.
Any other items any member of council wishes to have removed for discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item A, B, C, D, G, and J.
I'll second.
I need a motion.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll start with item A, professional service contracts, Schum's Cota. The Building and Life Safety Division of the Fire Department on occasion uses a third-party plan review for larger projects. This agreement allows the use of Schum's Cota for that service. Staff recommends approval. Do we need to ask just if she has specific questions?
I do. The contracts, and we're doing a lot of contracts tonight, so this is just a general question. When we require proof of insurance and policy endorsements prior to any work starting, even though a contract says work to start immediately, we receive all of those documents prior to anything occurring. Is that correct?
We do, and actually, this is, we have done this before on several occasions, not with this company. We work with HR and Jackie and making sure that they have all their insurances in, but absolutely, that all has to be done prior to us doing any work.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve item A of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item B, Indigent Services Contract. Approve the Indigent Service Contract with Whitney and Whitney P L L C for fiscal year 19. Staff recommends approval. Other question?
In reading the contract, the very last paragraph on page one, the first sentence, "Pay for interpreters for all out-of-court matters not approved by the court," and in discussions with Mr. Cooper and Judge Singer, I think it's appropriate that we remove the word "not." It didn't make sense.
Good catch. Good catch. Okay, we go ahead and make, we can take care of it. Go ahead, Doc. We don't need any further discussion. If you want to make a motion to that effect?
I have a question if you don't mind about this.
Certainly. Okay, go ahead, please.
This is for Judge Singer, whoever can answer this question, but I was just curious as to what are our practices with respect to soliciting this opportunity to the local defense bar? Do we put it out for bid? Do we, has anyone, you know, anyone from the local defense bar approached Indigent Defense Services or the court to see if they could get in on this opportunity? Are we advertising it at all, or what's the process here?
We have not been, and maybe Mr. Cooper can fill in kind of on the history and what the parameters are.
Yeah, I can basically can give you the background. We, many, many years ago, we had a single, it was Billy Sype who ascended to the bench, so the local group approached Judge McCoy at that point in time, the Whitneys', which is when we picked them up, and I know she routinely spoke with other council to see who had expressed any interest, and no one had really expressed an interest in assuming the whole contract. There might be a couple that would say, okay, we would take a few or take your conflict cases, but it seemed to be kind of an issue for someone to absorb the whole contract itself. I know she had talked at some point with the county, the public defender's office, or even starting up a public defender office in the city, but I don't know if that's a fiscal issue to be dealing with right now, and I think that's the background, and then Judge Singer could probably go from his turn up.
Do we know what the cost comparison would be if we were to have a public defender's office employed by the city as compared to what we're paying Indigent Defense Services to contract this opportunity out? It's pretty high.
I would assume it would be a lot more than what the contract calls for. I mean, because, you know, the Whitney firm provides numerous lawyers who are there on a regular basis in our court, so I, you know, I can venture that it would, safe to say that it would be a lot more than what their contract calls for when you start talking about, you know, support staff and things like that, when you're actually thinking about doing a whole office there with, you know, public defender's office, if you're going to have numerous attorneys, if you're going to have support staff, clerical staff, you know, and all the expenses that go along with it. So, we do have two firms that we also utilize for conflict counsel, and so they step in and help out when we have conflicts with, you know, people that the Whitneys have a conflict with representing, so they step in and represent them, but as far as being approached by any other firms to, you know, to have this contract, I have not been in my three years here as your judge.
And is that what the process would be if a local defense firm were interested in taking over that, in competing for that opportunity? Would they be, would the approach be to approach the court and express their interest that way?
Carl, what would you suggest would be the best approach on that?
I think if there was a known interest, then, I mean, because this on the procurement code, which we're working on drafting the updated one, this is professional services, so you can do direct selection, but if there was an interest that was out there that someone was expressing to the court, I'm sure they could, they could look at it at that point in time.
Okay.
Sure. Of course, we'd be interested, but...
I'm just not aware of anybody right now that would express that interest.
No, I'm not. I'm not either, but if it would be, then, of course, you know, we'd definitely take it into consideration.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve with the change in verbiage. Did you want to?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Item B?
With one change, and that is to strike the word "not" in the bottom paragraph, first page.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item C, Resolution Number 5150, Intergovernmental Agreement with Mojave County for the Waving of Septic Tank Abandonment Permit Fees for Properties Participating in the Sewer Connection Assistance Program. The City of Kingman recently adopted the Sewer Connection Assistance Program to provide financial assistance in the form of a loan to residential property owners who cannot afford to pay upfront the costs for the abandonment of their existing septic system and connect to public sewer. This program is intended to encourage sewer connections and provide for another option to pay for the work. The cost of each septic tank abandonment permit fee is $227. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5150 that the mayor be authorized to sign the intergovernmental agreement with Mojave County. You had a question? Councilmember Kress?
The supervisors' meeting yesterday, was this approved?
It was originally intended to be on the supervisors' meeting yesterday, but it's been delayed to the next supervisors' meeting.
Okay.
And...
Is there? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I understand that I've been assured it's going to be on the next meeting, and I don't anticipate any, any issues or questions from the Board of Supervisors for approving this.
What is the estimated revenue loss with the waiver of these fees, the $227 per?
Normally, those fees would go to Mojave County, so there'll be no revenue loss to the city on this.
Okay.
We'll have some staff time because we'll step up and do the inspections for any abandements of septic tanks that would occur in the county, but no revenue loss to the city at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, if that answers your questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve item C of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 5150 as submitted.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item D, Resolution Number 5149, Authorization of Banking Activities. Resolution Number 5149 removes James C. Bacon Jr. and adds Ronald W. Foggan as city manager as an authorized bank signer. It also adds Melissa Ellico, Finance Administrator, as an authorized approver and security administrator of the city's bank accounts. Staff recommends approval. You had a question?
I do. Maybe Mr. Foggan can answer this. That would be a total of five people that can sign checks for the city?
No.
No.
Actually, not. Councilmember Kress, that is, Mr. Foggan and myself are the only individuals that can sign checks for the city, and that's that first section of the resolution. The bottom section of the resolution actually delegates the authority of who is able to authorize any sort of wire transfers, meaning that there are, there are one, two, three, four of us actually that are able to do that. Mr. Foggan is not allowed to do that, and it requires two of us on every single one of those wire transfers, so it's just delegating the authority to four of us, and we do it to our management staff. That will be reduced to three next fiscal year based on the reorganization.
And we need that many.
So, a lot of times I am not in the office, and we have wire transfers multiple times throughout the week, and to accommodate and ensure that these transfers are being completed, we feel that it's necessary for four of us to have the authority to do so. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Does this fit in with our new financial policy?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so this is more about checks and balances?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve item D of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda as submitted. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Item G, Approval of Construction Contract for the Stockton Hill Waterline Replacement Project. In March, the city solicited for a construction manager at risk for the Stockton Hill Road Waterline Replacement Project. A selection committee comprised of city staff, an engineering consultant, and a licensed contractor selected Hayden Building Corporation as the most qualified. Staff recommends that the city council approve the contract and authorize the mayor to sign the contract on the city's behalf. Councilmember Kress?
The $288,000 and change, I just want to ensure that that's in the budget?
Yes, ma'am, it's in the current budget, and we were hoping to acquire that pipe, waterline pipe for the end of June, and in fact, we do already have bonds and insurance in place for this particular contract as well.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, this wouldn't be on the consent agenda if it wasn't already in the budget? Right, okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't be asking to spend money if it's not in the budget, yeah, normally.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve item G of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve item G on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And moving on to item J of the consent agenda, Kingman Airport Terminal and Administration Parking. The Kingman Airport Terminal Administration parking lots are long overdue for pavement preservation. This project will pave a connection between the two parking areas and seal the parking lots. The attached proposal from Sunland Asphalt will provide preventative maintenance of these paved assets. Staff recommends approval of proposal number 84119-2 from Sunland in the amount of $73,722. of Proposal Number 84119-2 from Sunland in the amount of $73,722. You had a question?
I have a very simple question. How many bids were solicited for this project?
Oh, this was done, this was done under a cooperative agreement with the city of Buckeye. This is the same company that's in town doing the current work on Stockton Hill Road. So the cooperative contract meets the requirements of our procurement code. So we didn't receive other bids for this project.
And these agreements are reviewed fairly regularly?
Yes, ma'am. They've been a benefit for us, especially being able to utilize Phoenix area contracts, where generally they're getting better contract prices than we would. I think the issue on this one was more time and being able to get this done before the end of June to utilize existing funds in the airport fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve item J of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve item J on the consent agenda submitted.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to Old Business. Item 4A, Public Hearing Number Two and Resolution Number 5145, Authorization to Submit CDBG Application. When the mayor opens this public hearing, residents may comment on the following. Kingman is expected to receive approximately $667,271 in federal CDBG funds from the Arizona Department of Housing. During the first CDBG public hearing held January 17, 2018, council members selected a project to complete ADA improvements along Andy Devine Avenue from Fifth Street to West Beale Street. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5145, authorizing staff to submit the fiscal year 2018-19 CDBG application and authorize the mayor to sign grant documents. Good evening.
Your honor, members of the council, I'm Gary Kellogg. I'm sitting in for Bill Schilling, who is unable to attend this evening. So I'll be here to answer any questions you might have concerning this grant. As you notice, under the fiscal impact, all funds associated with this action are budgeted through the CBG grant. So this is an excellent way to do these improvements in our downtown area.
Mr. Kellogg, I do believe this has been a long time coming. This is something we talked about
Yes.
a long time ago. So I'm glad to see that the funds are here and that we'll finally get this, this project moving forward. So this, any questions of staff at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. It is now an action item. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 5145.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? I will say, this is a comment to the city manager, I'm hoping, moving forward, that we will have more lead time when we're talking about future CDBG potential projects. So the council has more of an opportunity to see all of the possible improvements and how we can best use these funds. So I'd like to see it more than a few months out, but two and three years out would be really ideal when we look to planning ahead. So we have a motion and a second to approve. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item B, Ordinance Number 1857, Removing Commission Review from the Process for Commission Member Appointment. At the May 15, 2018 Work Session Meeting, the city council directed staff to... Did I? I sure did. I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
I did. Absolutely. Okay. I just went to the other B. Agreement for Program Manager Services with Matrix Design Group. Staff has received a revised proposal from Matrix Design Group regarding the I-11 East Kingman Connection Program Manager Services Agreement. Based on the discussion at the March 20, 2018 council work session, the proposal has been separated into two phases with the project needs, report updates, and cost estimates in Phase One, and right-of-way acquisition in Phase Two. Phase One also includes a delivery, a project delivery analysis. Staff recommends approving the professional services agreement with Matrix Design Group for $646,465 and authorizing the mayor to sign on the city's behalf.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Basically, what we have in the agreement, and just let me remind council that we did, we did talk about Matrix at the January 16 work session, and again at the March 20 work session. And we've been discussing their scope and revising it accordingly. And what we have in tonight's scope here is basically the project development phase. And it's going to include a project assessment, basically looking at where the project is at today and the documents that have been approved, and making an assessment and determination on that. We've got public support and coordination. We've got the change of access report for the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway. Right-of-way acquisition is included, as well as a project delivery analysis, to go over the various procurement options and make a recommendation to the council, for the council to vote on. We also have included some coordination with ADOT on the Kingman Crossing Interchange, which would be assistance with IGAs and working with ADOT on that. Matrix, if you recall, their original scope was about double what we have in tonight. Tonight, we're asking for approval of $646,465. We're planning a budget of $800,000 for next year, and I believe there's still money in this year's budget. There was $2 million that was shifted over to this project in October. So if we need to spend any of that money this year, that would come out of that $2 million, and then we'll have $800,000 to work with next year. So we do have the budget for it. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions.
Thank you. And I guess one question, someone in the audience asked me earlier, is that and the actual cost of the contract, or is that the cap?
That's the cost of the contract. It's a not-to-exceed
Not-to-exceed.
bump-sum amount. So if there's any of the items in there that aren't used, we don't get billed for them.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Any other questions or comments of staff?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Mr. Henry, will this work prepare us in October to have the information and the presentation to go to ADOT, since we are scheduled to present to them on the I-11 project then? Will we have all the information that they would require?
We'll certainly have the most...
Start with their budget process?
Yes, ma'am. We'll certainly have the most updated information at that time. And if there's any exhibits or figures that are needed for that presentation, that would be included in the scope to provide.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. We do have someone from the audience wishing, signed up to speak on this item. Harley Pettit?
I would draw my own question.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve item B, Old Business Agreement for Program Manager Services with Matrix Design Group.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the professional services agreement with Matrix Design Group for $646,465 and authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item C, Supermajority Voting. The council, I'm sorry. The council directed staff to prepare two ordinances to address the supermajority issue regarding the increase of the TPT rate and the rededication of TPT revenues previously dedicated. Ordinance 1863 calls for a supermajority five-seven, five out of seven, to increase the TPT and use tax rate. Ordinance Number 1867 calls for a supermajority six out of seven council members to rededicate the TPT and use tax to another person, a purpose. Council discretion. This is actually an item that we discussed at the last council meeting. This is just back, because rather than looking at one ordinance, we broke it into two.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I did.
Okay. So if there are no questions of staff at this time, we do have two people signed up to speak on this item. Harley Pettit?
Mayor, council, my name is Harley Pettit and resident of Kingman. I don't think we need a two-tiered supermajority system. This council already has a voting history of five out of seven. And it was going to take a six out of seven to, to rededicate the TPT in the future. Actually, I think the vote should be unanimous. You're all elected officials. But six to seven across the board would be a better solution instead of this tiered thing. Again, we already have a voting record of five out of seven already. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Dickmeyer?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Doug Dickmeyer. I'm a resident in Kingman. A tiered majority proposed by Mr. Lingenviller at the last council and addressed tonight makes absolutely no sense. Are we going to have a regular supermajority in a supermajority light? Councils should have only one supermajority. I agree that a six-one, or six-seven, majority vote is needed to protect monies from being moved or relocated to other projects when originally, originally allocated to certain projects like road preservation. But just as important, if not more important, is the taking of monies from the city residents by implementing or increasing taxes, TPT, et cetera. Both of these items should have the same overwhelming commitment of the council and require a six-one supermajority to enact any change. Contrary to Mr. Lingenviller's comment last, council, one person cannot stop anything. Excuse me. Some of us believe that four or five council members have a voting block, or at least engage in group think. You are elected to represent us and believing that most of the citizens of Kingman would agree a six-one supermajority is honest and fair to all. The right thing to do is amend Ordinance 1867 to include increases to TPT and use tax rate. This would bring all under the six-one or six-seven majority vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this item. Does anyone wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, it is now an action item. Let's go ahead and discuss these separately. Let's take a look at the first ordinance, Number 1863, calls for a supermajority of five out of seven council members to increase the TPT and use tax rate. This is an action item at this time. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to motion that we approve Ordinance 1863.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1863 as written. Is there any discussion? Well, I will start by saying that I actually put this on the agenda so that we separate each item and then talk about them separately, at least consider them separately. And I do believe, as I've said before, I believe it should be a supermajority out of six out of the seven council members to increase TPT and use tax rate. So therefore, I cannot vote in support of this ordinance. Is there any other questions or comments?
Go ahead, David.
I was just going to say, it seems that currently it's at four-seven. So at five-seven, it would protect one's interest more than it is currently. I'm not sure why. I mean, you know, the proposition is five-seven, and, you know, I'd be okay with that. I'd also be okay with a six-seven. I think it's important that it's increased, is it not? Okay. Sorry, I was just looking at that. But I think that, I don't see the logic in not increasing it if one would like it increased even more. Because I'm not, I don't think we're excluding the possibility of later changing it if somebody, if, you know, the majority of council feels that way. But currently, at four-seven, it's, seems counterproductive to everyone's interest. So that's just my perspective. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just say that everyone that sits up here, they were elected by the citizens of Kingman, based upon what they campaigned on. I can only speak for myself that, you know, all of my votes are for the future generations of Kingman and to make this a healthy and vibrant community. And if you don't agree with those, then as a citizen or as citizens, we can vote out the people that sit up here. I'm going to take exception to this argument that I keep hearing. It's like this us versus them thing. And I'm going to, I'm of the opinion that there is no us versus them. It's either we all win in Kingman, or we all lose in Kingman. So I'm going to vote my conscience. I'm going to vote yes on this.
Other comments on Ordinance 1863?
Madam mayor, I'm also going to vote my conscience that it's very reasonable to ask for six out of seven members of the city council to approve taking more money from our citizens. A five-seven vote, I think, is not substantial. It doesn't make a difference.
Thank you. Other comments? Vice mayor?
I guess I will make a comment. I believe it is substantial. I think that, as was noted, it's more restrictive than our existing requirement, which is a four-person majority. This makes it more restrictive. But just based on the history that I've experienced, there can be disagreements that are on raises in taxes. But if the elected officials that do represent to the best that they can, their constituents, if five of them think that this is necessary, based on the informed decisions that are informed by staff, I'm comfortable that those five are enough to move this forward. And in the case of the past year, it worked. It would not have worked. I personally believe if we had had to have six, and so, and I think, because I believe it is critical what has been done to move Kingman forward, I will vote for five to make it more restrictive, but I would not vote for six.
Any other comments? I guess my final comment on that, as Vice mayor suggested, if this had been in place last year, the six out of seven supermajority to approve a tax increase, we would not, as a community, be looking at an initiative that could completely, wouldn't restrict, it would take away the council's right to move or allocate or raise revenues as necessary and prudent. So having said that, if there are no further comments, I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1863.
Attorney, have the motion.
Okay. Wait. Thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor of Ordinance 1863, supermajority five out of seven to increase TPT and use tax rate. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Aye.
Aye.
Did you need a roll call, or you got that? Okay. So moving on to Ordinance Number 1867, calls for a supermajority six out of seven to rededicate the TPT and use tax to another purpose. No one in the council, in the council chambers wishes to address at this time? All right. So I will entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 1867, supermajority six out of seven people to rededicate TPT and use tax to another purpose.
I motion to approve Ordinance Number 1867.
Is there...
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Moving on to item D, Airport Advisory Commission. The council directed staff to prepare an ordinance to create the Airport Advisory Commission. Staff recommends adoption of Ordinance Number 1864.
And, mayor, this was brought back from the last council meeting with the changes that were requested by council.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion or questions of staff at this time? Entertain a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1864 as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item five, under New Business, 5A, Consideration of Canceling the Regular Council Meeting of July 17... council meeting of July 3, 2018. Given the timing of the Fourth of July holiday, being on a Wednesday this year and many families will be traveling, council feels that it would be prudent to cancel the July 3, 2018 regular council meeting and defer those items to the July 17, 2018 regular meeting agenda. Staff recommends approval. Is there any need for discussion on this item? Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? I mean, this is pretty straightforward here. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Hello?
I'll make a motion to cancel the July 3 council meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve. I just want to ensure that we're not gonna end up with a backlog on the following meeting, right? We have this all. Okay, we're in good shape. All right, thank you. Motion and a second to approve. No further discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That was in opposition. Okay, make sure she got that. Ordinance, moving on to 5B, ordinance number 1857, removing commission review from the process for commission member appointment. At the May 15, 2018 work session meeting, the council directed staff to initiate an ordinance change to remove the process for commission review from the process for commission member appointment. Ordinance number 1857 removes commission review from this process as outlined in section 2-157D of the Kingman Municipal Code. Staff recommends approval based on council direction. Any comments from staff?
Basically, it just deletes the section of text that refers the applicants to the commissions and just goes directly to council for selection.
Okay, for council selection. Any questions or comments from staff? Anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 1857 as written.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1857.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item C, a city-initiated request for a text amendment to section 2, 4, 5, 7, and 26 of the zoning ordinances of the City of Kingman establishing a definition of and regulations for tiny homes. In November 2017, Planning and Zoning Commission began discussing issue of tiny homes and conducting public outreach. After thorough research, gathering public input, and ongoing discussions of tiny homes, staff compiled the information and presented a discussion item at the April 10, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission. At the May 9, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff presented the proposed text amendment to section 2, 4, 5, and 26 of the zoning ordinance, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero for approval of the proposed text amendments. Staff recommends approval. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I do have a short presentation for you, about eight slides, if you'd like to see it really quick.
Short, no pun intended.
No pun. No, it's short for tiny homes. Okay, so I'm gonna learn this yet. There we are. Okay, since about November 2017, we've had several meetings with the commission and some outreach to the public. And the discussion has been related to what zoning districts should tiny homes be allowed in, should be in, and what should the appearance criteria be, what the minimum size lot should be, and tiny homes, what lot should they be allowed to construct it on. To help answer these questions, we sought input from the public by holding multiple Planning and Zoning Commission meetings to discuss tiny homes, issuing public service announcements which led to newspaper articles and radio announcements, posted on Facebook, and held a public workshop. After months of discussion, the commission voted seven-zero for staff to draft a text amendment to sections of the City of Kingman zoning ordinance to establish a definition of and regulations for tiny homes at the April 10, 2018 meeting. At the May 9, 2018 meeting, the commission voted seven-zero for approval of the proposed text amendments to sections 2, 4, 5, and 26 of the City of Kingman zoning ordinance. An approval of the proposed text amendments will result in the following. An added definition of tiny homes stating that it is any single-family residence with a minimum floor size less than 860 square feet, but not smaller than 300 square feet. Tiny homes will be allowed in the R2 and RMH6 zoning districts only. Tiny homes may be constructed on 25 by 100-foot lots in the R2 zoning district only, as long as the home is connected to sewer. Tiny homes will have to meet the appearance criteria in both zoning districts. All new detached accessory structures in any residential zoning district built after July 5, 2018 must meet the appearance criteria. And here's just a little map of some areas where there is R2 and RMH6 zoning. Right here is R2 in the downtown area, and then there's some on the other side of the tracks in RMH6. It's just a little shot of what's available in the city. And there's also some RMH6 zoning behind KRC as well. That's basically my presentation tonight. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. Was anyone from the community opposed to this idea?
Actually, I didn't have anybody opposed. I think more than concerns were the appearance.
Great. Thank you very much. Other questions of staff? Councilmember Lincolnfeller?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank staff and also the Planning and Zoning Commission for looking at this and sending it up to us. I'm really pleased to see this in front of us tonight. This is something that's been used in other communities, you know, for empty nesters that are looking to downsize, and then also for millennials that are looking to get into like a first-time home purchase. And it's something that other communities across the nation have used as a part of their downtown redevelopment efforts and other things. So I'm glad that the City of Kingman is looking at this and just thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments? Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the city-initiated request for a text amendment to sections 2, 4, 5, 7, and 26 of the zoning ordinances of the City of Kingman establishing a definition of and regulations for tiny homes. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
I will just make a comment that the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff have worked a long time and very hard on this ordinance.
Well, I'm just so pleased to see us getting ahead of these new trends rather than just reacting to them. So this is really great to see.
There was a lot of public input, a lot of public interest.
That's very exciting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution number 5147, adoption of fiscal year 2018/2019 tentative budget. The tentative budget as presented includes changes recommended at the budget work sessions on May 10 and May 11, 2018. Any additional modifications made to the tentative budget tonight will be incorporated into the final budget scheduled for adoption in two weeks on the June 19, 2018. Staff recommends approval of resolution number 5147 and adoption of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2018/2019.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. And we are nearing the end of our budget season with the tentative budget adoption this evening. So as the communication stated, tonight's tentative budget does include the modifications that were requested at our budget work sessions. They are attached in the agenda, but I can certainly go over those quickly to ensure that we did capture all of those items. There's just a very short handful and might be important maybe to bring those out. So we are identifying, or we are dedicating $100,000 towards a comprehensive marketing and branding study. $50,000 towards a parks and open space study. We are also increasing our playground equipment capital project by almost $50,000. We are also dedicating another $30,000 towards developing the White Cliffs Trail. On top of that, as we were reviewing the I-11 East Kingman Connection projects, we had included in there the Kingman Crossing traffic interchange. And although we are not funding any of that next year, we had included developer contributions and then had shown the offsetting costs. And because that's not a project that the city is funding next year, we did, we were asked to pull those monies out. And so we are removing those from the five-year, from being proposed as revenues and offsetting expenditures in the fiscal year 19 budget. There was also a project that we talked about on that Friday that had been excluded oversight on our part, excluded from the five-year capital improvement project, which was increasing the I-11 East Kingman Connection projects in general by $250,000, which was for the Airway Avenue and I believe the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway right-of-way. I believe I got that correct. Okay. And so other than that, those were the modifications that council had requested. Now, since that, since that time, Manager Foggan and I have met with the airport. And now that it is under the city's operations and the department is in place, the budget that we had recommended to you was really just thrown together, and we didn't get a chance to work with the department in developing that. And so in talking with them very recently, we were able to get a better idea of what they might need next year for capital projects and for some other funding. And so we as staff are also requesting a modification to next year's budget to the tune of almost $550,000 to the airport fund. And I do have those projects listed on what we are requesting and what staff is requesting. So we are requesting a $50,000 increase. And that is up. Are we able to get that on the council members' monitors so that they can see that? Great, thank you. So $50,000 to the supplies and services budget for some temporary labor. And then the rest are for capital projects. So $150,000 for pavement management on runway 321, $50,000 for a terminal apron, $50,000 for some gate upgrades, $150,000 for the terminal building remodel, as well as $100,000 for a tractor and mower. So we are requesting that increase. And if the tentative budget is approved with those modifications as well, it'll put our appropriations at $120,863,210. And so that is what we are requesting in resolution 5147. Now, it is important to note that any, that the tentative budget, when it is adopted this evening, sets a ceiling on the appropriations, meaning that when we come back for final budget approval, we cannot add anything, any expenditures to the budget. We can only reduce them at that time.
I have just one very small item. How did you arrive at the terminal building remodel cost of $150,000?
So we know for certain that the electrical upgrades themselves are almost $50,000. And then in talking with staff, not knowing exactly as far as maybe some asbestos and things of that nature, which will automatically escalate costs, we felt that including $100,000 for the rest of the upgrade would allow, or for the remodel, rather, would allow ample spending for that. Did I capture everything correctly, Mr. Foggan?
The answer is, we don't know, Mayor. And to cut through the tape, we don't know. In conversations with Gary and Bill and Joe, the $150,000 is really an effort to get the building electrically sound, to take care of asbestos issues, and also to try to make improvements for what is referred to as the pilot's room.
Right.
And so I really feel like it's a safe number.
Okay.
But we, it may require a phase-two.
I think, I think so. Because I know we had discussion about the electrical alone.
Yeah.
Was anticipated to be at least $50,000.
I think we're landing around 40 to 50. But again, with budgeting, it's just get your crystal ball out sometimes and try to get close.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Other questions, staff?
Just to confirm with Manager Foggan, so it is going to include some pilots lounge type of activities in that remodel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I had a couple other things, if I may. I'd like to discuss with the council, requesting that the funding under the city manager's budget for bringing on a special assistant down the road be moved to the contingency budget. And then if you wanted to bring that back to staff, and I'd like to see it come with a scope of work. Does that make sense?
I'm not sure. I understand where you're going with this. I don't, I don't understand the rationale for trying to move it from the city manager's budget to a contingency fund.
I just think that that position should require some discussion and a vote from council and discussion and inclusion of a scope of services.
I know that the city council statutorily has three direct hires, and that is the city manager, the city attorney, and the city magistrate. The city manager's budget, if he elects to engage a limited time and limited-capacity assistant, that's his prerogative. So that's not something I could support.
Okay.
Other questions, comments on the budget as presented?
I have one other thing I'd like to ask that, and it sounds like we're gonna hear some more about this on our next council meeting, on the Main Street program. But the Main Street program is included in our City of Kingman general plan, which is voted on by the voters in 14. I'd like to request that funding for a new downtown Main Street program coordinator position be put into economic development. Downtown is incredibly important to the economic vitality of Kingman, which is extremely dependent on sales tax. And I think by having a dedicated full-time position with the appropriate background, education, and experience is gonna repay it for itself and then some, and make our downtown a true destination.
Did you have, I have a comment on that. I don't know.
Well, I can just tell you that we're working on a job description as outlined through our budget hearings. The last one, we talked about this position. I know that staff, the staff commitment was that we develop a job description that has Main Street coordinator or manager in the title, and that we develop a job description that allows this person to do a lot of work for the, for the Main Street or the downtown area, as well as, I think we described it as other duties as assigned. But we are fleshing out right now a job description for that, for that position based on that conversation at that budget hearing.
I have a question that goes with that. Included in that number, is there membership in the Main Street USA program that is, to the best of my knowledge, Kingman is not a part of?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm not, I'm not expert behind the numbers. I came after the numbers were.
I absolutely understand.
Maybe Tina could answer that.
I don't know that.
Okay. So the answer is no.
It is no. That is correct.
Well, I brought it up because it was obviously adopted by the voters. The Main Street program was included in that. I think that we are responsible for trying to further the goals of the citizens. And our downtown, I mean, it has picked up some momentum. The downtown First Fridays are a terrific event, but those are the downtown Main Street group that have put those on. And I think that the city needs to get in the game and have a full-time position to really make downtown a destination.
And I'll let the council speak to that. What I would say, counselor, is that you have a commitment from myself and Gary and the person that is hired or promoted to do this work will push that rock forward as quickly and with as much effort as we possibly can. As I think you'll all remember, we had this discussion, and what I had suggested was that we, that we step, we step our way into this and felt like we could really keep that momentum moving in the right direction and would give us the opportunity to see over the next year whether we could or needed additional help in the downtown. So I mean, if the council wants to go a different direction, we're fine with that. I will just verify our commitment to helping the council achieve their goal for downtown with effort from multiple staff members, so.
You know, I'm very confident in saying this entire council is very supportive of revitalizing downtown and moving these initiatives forward. I'm just cautious when we keep referring to that Main Street name. That is part of a national organization. Kingman was a part of that many years ago, and it was not successful. So if there is a way to just, as you suggested, move these initiatives forward and not tie ourselves down to a particular program that, again, we participated in in the past, and it wasn't successful here. But I'm confident that you, staff, are willing to dedicate the adequate ample resources to continuing the vision of this council, which is promoting downtown activities and revitalizing our downtown.
You know, I don't think it's fair to compare 2018 to what the city did in the '80s. That's a long time ago. It's different, and the citizens did vote on it. And I think we need to really champion our downtown, which is a jewel. And with one person working on groundwriting and in the public realm, hopefully, we'll have a downtown component in our economic development strategic plan. They would be a critical part of that. A Main Street coordinator is much more than just an event planner. They do far more than that. And the sooner that we can turn our downtown into a downtown that's a destination, you know, it's going to be a really big sales tax generator, and we need it. And with all the tourists down there, it just makes sense to have somebody that's full-time working on it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have some.
Okay.
On both of the positions that we've discussed. First of all, having talked to Manager Foggan recently about this, I, and also based on the conversations that we had when we met in workshop about finding a compromise on how to revise the job description to include the attributes of Main Street Coordinator and encompass it in this neighborhood specialist position, I'm willing to give it a shot to see if that position, combined with the support of Mr. Kellogg and yourself, because I know you've had a lot of experience in Dallas, Oregon, in downtown revitalization. So, I'm willing to personally give it a shot and see if we can make it work with the team that we have now organized. Again, I go back to job descriptions, too. It will be good to see the job description and have that to compare the actual performance against. And that was something that we lacked in the workshop. But I feel like the council members came to a compromise position that we felt okay going forth with. I think we do all want downtown to be stellar. And so, this will be looked at very critically as we go forth. The other thing I wanted to mention, though, and going back to the comments that Councilman Lincolnfelter made about the assistant, the executive assistant in your budget. And it is not a position that reports to council, and I understand that. But when we did approve that position, I guess, was it a year ago? Year and a half ago? Whenever we did approve that, there were specific objectives that the council was trying to reach. And I think, again, it's kind of fair to ask for, where is the job description? How is it compared to the, you know, to the skill sets that are being looked at? And I think that's where I would like to see that forthcoming. I think it's fair to say, in an organizational structure, council should be able to look at the organization and the job description supporting the positions, especially when we've approved the positions without having, you know, any further input in the job description process.
I understood the first job description. What was the job description for the second position?
You mean, okay, you understood the Main Street?
Yeah.
It was more of a PIO assistant.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. I can catch up now.
So, I think there's just some unease.
Yeah. So, we have been working on the public relations job description. And I think we've got a really nice mix of skills put in that. I'm happy to share job descriptions. And I think you're going to really like it. It's got some technical skills for, you know, document creation. It's got the skills. We're asking for skills for social media. I think you heard earlier tonight, the IT director suggesting that this person is going to be responsible for helping departments make sure that there's edits that are correct.
All good.
And that we've got new and fresh information. So, yeah, I have no problem sharing the job descriptions on how these people are, what they're going to be asked to do and how they will be evaluated.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem whatsoever. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. Other questions, comments of staff? Thank you. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 5147, the adoption of fiscal year 2018, 2019 tentative budget. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Only further discussion. Thank you all so much for all your hard work and effort. A lot going on at one time, and you managed to probably produce the most understandable, simplest budget I've seen.
Mayor, why we're just doing that? I want to thank the entire leadership staff and the support staff for their efforts on this. And Tina, you get a gold star on the forehead. So, great job.
Thank you. Motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passed unanimously. Item E, Public Hearing and Consideration of Ordinance Number 1866, a request to rezone property located at 2604 Wallapi Mountain Road from R110 Residential Single Family, 10,000 square foot lot minimum, to C2 HMR Residential, pardon me, Wallapi Mountain Road Overlay District. A request from TR Orr applicant and Joshua 18 Investments LLC, property owner, for the rezoning of property located at 2604 Wallapi Mountain Road from R110 Residential Single Family, 10,000 square foot lot minimum, to C2 HMR, Wallapi Mountain Road Overlay District. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on May 10, 2018, and determined that the proposed zoning district is suitable. Commission voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the rezoning request. Staff recommends approval of ordinance number 1866.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a rezoning case on Wallapi Mountain Road from R16 to C2 HMR. The applicant's TR Orr. Property owner is Joshua 1.8 Investments LLC. This location is next to the Veterans Administration Clinic, just across, sort of across the street from Dollar General and to the east of Wallapi Quick Stop. It's 2.72 acres. It's access off of Wallapi Mountain Road. The general plan land use designation is community commercial, so it fits in with that designation. The C2 HMR district will fit with that designation. The, as far as utilities that serve the area, there is water already across the property frontage. However, sewer will have to be extended to the site from the south through an easement. The applicant intends to construct a 16,000 square foot office building for one-hour air conditioning. The C2 HMR district does allow for contractor offices, provided there is no outside storage of construction equipment or materials. Development will have to comply with the design and site development standards for the C2 HMR district, including architectural design. Does appear the preliminary plans will comply. However, they'll have to do some modifications to the side and rear aspects of the building to comply with those requirements based upon the plans that were submitted. They also will have to replace at least 50% of the parking spaces to the side or to the rear of the building. That is also shown in the site plan that they've submitted. This is also, the C2 HMR district is both a zoning district and a design review district. So, there are some additional requirements, such as monument-style signs that are allowed or permitted there rather than the pole-type signs. So, monument sign, six foot tall and 35 square feet, would be permitted. This is the site plan that's been submitted thus far. As I mentioned, the parking layout will comply with the C2 HMR requirements. And this is the preliminary building elevations. As I mentioned, the size and rear will have to be modified a bit to comply with the architectural requirements in this district. So, the commission recommended approval. The only condition was that there would be no outside storage of materials or equipment on the site. So, that recommendation is reflected in ordinance number 1866, and staff is recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant and the property owner are both here this evening as well.
Thank you. I guess I'm just curious. I have an invitation to a groundbreaking tomorrow morning for this project. How do you do groundbreaking if you don't have the zoning? Just optimism? Okay.
Yes, I would say so.
Just wanted to clarify that. You didn't have any objections to this request?
There were none.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Thank you. Does the applicant wish to address the council at this time? Okay.
Recommend approval of ordinance number 1866.
Mayor, this is a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
I beg your pardon. Does anybody in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
Recommend approval of ordinance number 1866.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck. Moving on to Consideration of Resolution Number 5152, approving a street improvement deferral for a portion of North Arnold Road. Living Faith Assembly of God owns property located at 4605 North Arnold Road. A building permit application for a new roof system has been submitted to the city with an estimated construction cost of $80,000. The Traffic Safety Committee reviewed the request on May 17, 2018, and identified drainage concerns that might impact properties to the north if street improvements were required at this time. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5152.
Mayor and council, I don't have presentations for you this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have on this particular item.
This is, the recommendation from staff is to approve?
Yes.
This? And then, again, we could require improvements down the road?
Yeah, the resolution is written.
Another trigger.
Give you that opportunity. Yes.
Thank you. Questions of staff on this item? Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 5152.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think Councilmember Lincolnfelter was not here, so he did not vote on that. Item G, Public Hearing and Consideration of Resolution Number 5146, to approve the vacation abandonment of a portion of right-of-way for East Oak Street and North Third Street. This is a request from Paul J. Wassel, applicant and adjoining property owner, to abandon portions of right-of-way for East Oak Street and North Third Street. This is requested so that the applicant can obtain additional property at the southwest corner of East Oak Street and North Third Street to build three residential units. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on May 10, 2018, and voted 7 to 0 to approve the request as recommended by staff. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 5146.
Good evening once again. This is an abandonment case concerning portions of right-of-way for East Oak Street, North Third Street, in the downtown Kingman area. It's adjacent to a property located at the southwest corner of North Third and East Oak. This is the location. Another aerial showing the location, Third and Oak. This is just a survey of the property. It's about 6,251 square feet. It's currently zone R2. And the abandonment is being requested so that the adjacent owner can obtain additional property to construct three residential units. The R2 district allows one unit per 2,200 square feet, with a minimum of 6,000 square feet needed for two units. So, they are about 349 square feet short of what would be needed for three residences on the property. Thus, the request to abandon some slivers of right-of-way surrounding the property. The city engineer recommended that a minimum of three inches be maintained between the edge of the sidewalk and the portion of the right-of-way that would be vacated. So, staff is recommending that the right-of-way width to be abandoned not be wider than two and a half feet. The city engineer has also suggested that the city obtain a five-by-five-foot triangle, which should be 12 and a half square feet at the northeast corner of the property to allow for the future reconstruction of an ADA ramp. The ramp that is there now at the sidewalk intersection is not compliant. So, the total area to be abandoned, the staff is recommending, minus the right-of-way triangle, would be about 394 square feet. And that would be enough when added to the property to allow three residences to be constructed. Incidentally, there were five homes on that property at one time that were torn down about two years ago. So, under the Section 5-1 of the street policy, any council resolution approving a vacation right-of-way is subject to payment by the applicant based upon the property value. The owner has estimated the value of the right-of-way at $5.60 a square foot. And that's based upon his original purchase price of $35,000 for the adjacent property. So, if that were accepted by the council, that would amount to $2,203.60 for the net right-of-way that would be vacated. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this request, again, with the requirement for the dedication of right-of-way at the corner and also the acceptance of the payment in the amount of $2,203.60. Staff is recommending approval of Resolution 5146. And I just have a couple of maps showing, so you can visualize the area that would be abandoned, shown here in Exhibit A. And this is the area that would be dedicated for the sidewalk ramps. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
That doesn't seem like that would even be noticeable. Am I right?
It would be, you know, not very noticeable, no.
Okay. Okay. Questions of staff on this item? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council at this time?
Good evening. My name's Siri Taber. I'm a City of Kingman resident. I don't have any objections to the development of this lot. However, I do have some concerns about the heavy overhead utilities that run along the east side of the parcel. I sort of remember when another zoning issue came before the council having to do with a restaurant on Andy Devine, where they built a patio on top of the utility lines. I heard that, you know, they were going to go ahead and let the city access if they ever needed to dig up those lines. My concern with this property is whoever runs the overhead utilities, whether it be Unisource or whomever, did they approve this that they would have the right amount of access to their utility lines? The sidewalk goes up about at least a foot. It's an awkward sort of thing with the drainage area on the side. I did not attend the zoning meeting. In fact, I might have got that information there. But in fact, the sign for the zoning notice had been laying down a number of weeks before this meeting. And I'm thinking possibly before the zoning meeting. So, I don't know what the statutes say about that, if it's not posted correctly. But I understand they had some construction people on the lot at the time they may have laid the sign down. But it was down for quite a while before this meeting. And like I said, possibly the planning meeting. That concern and just about the overhead utilities for this abandonment of right-of-way, I just wanted to bring to your attention. Okay? The project sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maybe we could get staff to address those items? Are the utility companies a part of this process? They must have to approve, right?
Yes, Madam Mayor, they are always contacted every time we have a request such as this. And there was no objection.
Thank you. And you didn't? Thank you. And you didn't have any public comment, a negative public comment regarding this?
I don't recall any, no, no. And in regards to the sign, we did post, we are required to post the site fifteen days prior to the P and Z meeting, which we did. The sign did get knocked down at some point. We did repost it, though.
So if someone sees a sign that has been displaced, they just need to call the city and you'll come back and?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this item? Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number fifty-one forty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution fifty-one forty-six.
Hello?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item H, opioid class action lawsuit. Cities, counties, and states are joining in a class action lawsuit focusing on prescription opioid manufacturers. The City of Kingman has been approached to join in the class action suit based upon the impact in our community and region. Counsel discretion?
Yes, ma'am. I believe it was a month or so ago that a group came in and spoke with you about this issue. And then apparently.
Police chief.
Correct. And then at the Tri-City Council, another group came in, and I think there were two separate ones. I think the group that talked to you was Andrew Thornton, and I think the Tri-City was Keller Warback, I think. But I wasn't at the Tri-City Council, so I'm not sure. So the idea was they being approached to look at joining the opioid litigation, not class action, but the opioid opioid litigation movement that's progressing quite rapidly across this country. I think there's about four hundred government entities that are starting up on this. And appears the idea is to try and, one, get some injunctive relief from the 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 prescription medication from being marketed and misused in such a nature. Looking at some, like I say, some injunction, injunctive relief, some restitution, some damages. Basically, that's what those litigation is approaching. So I guess the idea is, is the council interested in looking at joining this action? Those two firms that that at least have approached the city and the Tri-City Group are working on a contingency fee basis. Apparently, both of them are about twenty percent, so there's no cost to the city itself. Andrew Thornton went to the county, and the county declined to join that action. They'll be at Bullhead City's council meeting on the nineteenth. I don't know if they're going to proceed or not. I know Keller Warback is working with our risk pool, the county's risk pool. I think Cochise County, and there might be some alignment with interest with that group. They're based out of Phoenix. The other one's based out of California, or Keller Warback has a Phoenix office. I don't have a whole lot more of it. Is there an interest in the council proceeding with that? And if so, we could bring one of those groups in to give a presentation.
Well, I personally, from the time I met with the attorney and the other representative, and I spoke with Chief De Vries, he attended that meeting as well.
Right.
At the Tri-City Council meeting, I'm not sure it was the attorney representing as much as someone from the insurance pool.
Yeah, I wasn't there, so I wasn't sure.
I think this is an opportunity for Kingman, as you said, to get some relief. And it represents no cost to the city. And I'm assuming that your office and city staff as well will will vet these firms and help us to determine which might best suit our needs.
We've been looking at them. I think Phoenix is is have retained their own council and Scottsdale, but I think those are the only other cities that are doing anything at this point.
Well, if I remember what they said, is the real advantage for us taking, participating, is that we are named. So so when there is an award, that money doesn't trickle down through the state or county. It comes directly to the City of Kingman, and I see a huge benefit in that.
And that's kind of a kind of a look back to the tobacco litigation where.
Very similar.
It was more the states controlling and everything went to the state, and nothing seemed to go down to the localities.
Absolutely, so I.
So I think that's why you see this.
I'm definitely interested in seeing, again, because the minimal, the cost to the city would be merely your time vetting these firms. Any other thoughts?
So is there a request to bring one of these firms to to present to council then, to talk about?
Yeah, that's what I'm, is there an interest, is that, is this what the council direction, the council wants to go? And if so, do you have a particular firm, either one of these two or anybody else? I would say probably the Keller Warback would be the one that I would be more inclined to just to, with the, use the word synergy with the risk pool, because they're already on board with them. And they've got Bill Sims working in conjunction with that, and he does a lot of work with the pool, and he's a great local attorney.
I'd certainly like to know more.
Yeah.
Did the county give any reason for declining to join with that particular, was it that particular firm or all firm in general?
I believe it was the whole idea, based on the the newspaper article that I saw.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't talk to anybody over that.
The objection I read, again, it was from the newspaper, was more about that they felt there was a likeness to the tobacco issue from years ago. And this is, to me, this is different. This is us taking advantage of what might be our best opportunity to recoup some of the the expense this is burdening our community with, dealing with this crisis.
And the hope is that the recovery would be, it's indeterminate what kind of recovery, because right now what's happening is with all these different agencies starting to start this litigation, the federal courts have, they call it multi-jurisdictional litigation, and what they're doing is they've got some test cases, or everything's being sanctioned or dealt with by a judge in Ohio. And the idea is, once some of the discovery and some of the information comes out, it makes it easier for not only the defendants of these cases, but the plaintiffs to reach some sort of an agreement that will be nationwide. So we can't really tell what we're going to be looking at, but the idea is for some of the recovery of costs, you know, law enforcement, prosecutorial, court costs, treatment costs, something along that line, so.
You know, when I heard this at Tri-City, I I was like, taking on Big Pharma, yeah, let's do it, you know? Because they are clearly, according to the people who present, oversupplying the opioids into the market. And but there are certain physicians and other healthcare providers that are are abusers. And and my, what I would like to do is have someone come and speak to us. And I'd really like to hear, you know, more of the process of how that is going to be curbed or that they want it curbed by Big Pharma in such a way that the those that genuinely need pain relief are still going to be able to get it. And that that would be a discussion that I would like to hear.
The presentation I heard in my office was Ann, I don't remember the attorney's last name.
Thornton.
Yes. They're not attempting to regulate or do anything with prescription, how drugs are prescribed. They're just looking to take action against these pharmaceutical companies using the data that cities and towns and states provide, saying this is impact to the community, so.
And that's true. I I heard that, but it does trickle down to how they distribute and how they market and how, you know, how available it is on the market. So I'd like to hear that component addressed.
And you're going to see there's competing interests among the the parties. The state's going to be looking at a lot of injunctive relief generally, and the the treatment and the the regulation of that, the medicines, as opposed to maybe the cities themselves, because it's going to be more of how they've affected the cities. But I see, that'll be part of the settlement, I would suppose, during those discussions with five, six hundred different plaintiffs sitting down at a table.
Yeah, the ripple effect is going to be interesting.
Yes, ma'am.
The interesting thing is, though, this does seem to be progressing rather rapidly. I mean, when you talk about regular court time, this thing is kind of moving.
Yeah, my understanding is they're trying to set some trials this time next year, so.
So does that give you adequate direction?
Yes, ma'am.
Bring something back to the council?
I'll see if I can get somebody here with the next couple of meetings.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments on that item? We'll go ahead and move on to first public hearing on home rule option. The November twenty eighteen election will include a ballot question asking local voters to renew Kingman's home rule option as an alternative to the state-imposed spending limit. The home rule option is specific for a city's needs and remains in effect for four years at a time. Beginning in nineteen eighty-eight and every four years thereafter, Kingman voters have supported a home rule option that excludes water, wastewater, and sanitation expenditures from the state-imposed limit. The public hearing tonight is the first of two, with the second hearing scheduled for June nineteenth, twenty eighteen. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to receive and consider public comments on the option. No further action is required or recommended tonight. At the next meeting, council will need to vote on the proposed home rule option resolution in a special meeting.
Thank you very much. You've captured that very well. We have had multiple work sessions on this, and we have been given direction to move forward with the home rule option. The resolution that is attached in your agenda packet is a draft of what will be presented to you at the June nineteenth meeting. And basically, it reads almost identical to what several resolutions historically have read. It just includes airport expenditures as being excluded from the annual expenditure limitation calculation as well, because it is an enterprise fund, and it is funded with user fees and not part of state shared revenues or sales taxes. So there is no further action from you this evening, but it is a public hearing.
Thank you. Any any questions before we move forward? It's a public hearing. We do have one individual signed up to speak on this item. Harley Pettit.
Mayor and council, I'm Harley Pettit, resident of Kingman. And for the first time, I'm against a home rule option based on the spending history of this council. Signing funding concerns. And the council has seemingly a frivolous attitude when it comes to spending our taxpayers' money and where it's allocated. And even tonight, you just created another position for downtown. And we have an economic director and that we didn't didn't bargain for before. So for the first time, I think to control what's going on here, I'm advocating against the home rule option.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. This was for discussion only, and this will come back at a few, at the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Moving on to final action item for the evening is appointments to the Airport Advisory Commission. With the creation of the Airport Advisory Commission, there are now seven vacancies on this commission to be filled by the council. Commissioners are to serve on alternating terms with full terms beginning three years in length. Staff recommends that council appoint seven members to the Airport Advisory Commission and set the terms for each member or provide the method for determining these terms. Because this is a new commission, I asked staff to kind of give us a cheat sheet, if you will, of all the names of the people that wish to be considered. And this is really great news. We had so many qualified applicants. But again, our our task tonight is to appoint seven with staggered terms. City staff went ahead and compiled a list of some they thought they would recommend based on their experience, perspective, knowledge, airport involvement, and personal interactions. So having said that, if we want to have some discussion, or would you, I see some applicants in the audience tonight. Counsel, what's your wish? Do you wish to hear from the applicants? Or do you want to have some discussion on the candidates first? Thoughts?
I'd like to hear from the applicants if we could.
Okay. Well, I don't know. Somebody want to raise their hand and and we'll get started? You had a comment?
I was just going to say, in in interest to not disenfranchise any applicant, that I think we should offer the opportunity to every applicant, anyone who did apply who might be present to address.
That's that's what we're doing. Like I said, I'm just looking out in the audience and seeing where I can get somebody to raise a hand. Want to come, there you, sir, please approach.
Mayor and council, Gary Rucker. And I know it's been a long day for all of us, so what I would like to do is just to see if I could answer any questions you might have about what's on my application. And more than anything, I just want to emphasize that you base your selection on people that are actively engaged in aviation or have been, because that would be the complete opposite of what we've seen in the past. So let's not repeat the past. So I really thank you for the opportunity to be considered for this commission. And I think this is a great step forward for Kingman Airport. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying.
Questions to Mr. Rucker?
Thank you.
And could I get some, please approach?
Honorable mayor and distinguished council members, my name is David Amspoker. I've lived in Arizona all of my life, and I moved to Kingman full-time in nineteen eighty-four. I've served on the Municipal Utilities Commission for almost seven years. And so I'm pretty familiar with the operations of the commissions in regard to council activities. I obtained my pilot's license in two thousand and three, and since then, I've taken off and landed in over thirty-three states. So I'm quite familiar with other airports and what it takes to make a good airport. We have an airport with great potential. Few airports that don't have commercial air service have the revenue stream that this one has. I think that with good management, the airport can be a source of pride for the whole community. And can additionally, it can provide income for the city as more businesses move in to the industrial park. I'm the Young Eagles Coordinator for the EAA Chapter, where we give free airplane rides to kids ages eight up to eighteen. I myself have flown over one hundred children of the of the area. Do you have any questions for me? I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see Scott Brackett. You weren't going to raise your hand.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to be a member of the Airport Commission. Again, if you have any questions, just ask me. But the the goal here is really to look at in the future and determine which way we're headed along with the rest of the city. And that's what I'm going to try and help on.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the the council? Charles?
Hello again. And just to clarify, everybody knows me as Tim Gerlach, but Tim is my middle name. So my application lists my full name, Charles Timothy Gerlach. I am an airport user. I'm a pilot, aircraft owner, aircraft builder, current president of the Experimental Aircraft Association Chapter at Kingman Airport. I'm a longtime advocate of aviation and all that it does. And to some degree, with my interaction with the city and with matters at the airport, I've become a bit of an aviation evangelist. It's something I make no money off of. It's not my business, but it is my love and my passion. And long I've advocated for change at Kingman Airport. We are at that point. And if given the opportunity to serve, I'm here to help make Kingman Airport a recognized gateway to the community, a welcomed resource for the community to use, and a great first impression for business owners and other visitors to see when they come to Kingman. I thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else that has applied for this commission here this evening wish to address the council at this time? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mayor, council members, my name's John Stutzman. Resident now for 11, 12 years. I'm currently building an experimental aircraft. About six months ago, we joined the EAA chapter out here at the airport, my wife and I did. I'm kind of new to the process here, so I don't know a whole lot about some of the needs out there, but I'd be willing to, willing, be honored to serve if chosen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stutzman. Anyone else in the audience? There you are.
My name's Keith Kittner, and I'm just about a two-year resident of Kingman. And when my wife and I were deciding whether we wanted to move here or not, we moved here from Oshkosh, Wisconsin, which is the home of the EAA Experimental Aircraft Association. I'm an 18-year member and have applied for life membership in that organization. I've had a lifetime interest in aviation. I'm not a pilot currently, but I understand a lot about how a good airport should run. I know that this one was a sore point when we first arrived here, and anything I could do to help put in my two cents worth to move things forward and make us a winner of best airport in the state again would be worthwhile, and I'm willing to put forth the effort to do that. Do you have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to apply.
Thank you very much. Did you want to speak on behalf of your husband?
No, but could I just speak?
Sure. Well, I know her husband is an applicant. So, no, this would just be about if you want, I didn't see your husband here. I thought maybe you wanted to speak on his behalf.
No, I'm not a proxy, but I would, can I just take two minutes? Hmm? Yes? No? Yes?
Am I gonna get in trouble? Okay, yes.
It's innocuous.
Okay.
You get some kudos. So, good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Jill Gornetsky, and I'm a business owner out at the Kingman Airport. I would first like to state, in the past few weeks, the positive changes out there have been remarkable. And it's been noticed by many people that have come through my doors and in the course of my business and travels. The optimism for the eagerness to effect positive change out at the airport is palpable, and it is a great feeling, and I know I can speak for everyone out here that uses the airport. The team assembled to handle the transition from the former KAA is proactive, positive, and open to ideas. Interim Airport Manager Joe Husband has shown true leadership in the first meeting with the tenants, users, and business owners of the airport. He made a statement that he always starts with a yes. He may end up with a no, but he always starts with a yes, and that had a huge impact on me the first meeting, and I can't tell you how refreshing that is in the face of what has happened in the past. I want to tell you that I would like to be on the Airport Advisory Committee, about to be formed, but I do not have the time or commitment to engage in that, and it wouldn't be fair, because I wouldn't be putting my best foot forward. But you have a whole host of people, not three or four, what, 14 or more, and I'm excited about that. The reason that I'm here making comments is that I would like to implore you to select from the pool of applicants wisely, and there are those individuals out there who have demonstrated the commitment, knowledge, leadership, and expertise to support you in the policy and decision-making process of developing the airport as an important economic hub for the city of Kingman. The next few years are going to be a roll-up-your-shirt sleeves and get-to-work out at the airport. We need to make up for lost and wasted time, and the interchange in airport developments are time-critical. But the applicants you select tonight are mission-critical, and I hope you choose wisely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we've heard from, yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Michael Finnegan, from Kingman originally, mayor and council. I grew up in the city. I left in 1965. Have been in aviation since then, when I joined the Navy. Retired, back to Kingman in 95. All these people that have applied are a great group of people. Most of them, if not all of them, all fought for this change to happen, and I think you couldn't find any better people. Myself, I'm a 6,000-hour pilot, spent my initial flight training out of San Diego, and then initial jobs were like B-17s, the old war stuff, fighting fire. And then I was a certified mechanic, AMP, and then I moved on to flying large four-engine turbolift aircraft, turboprop aircraft, flying rock and roll stars all over the U.S., all the cities, for 20 years as a captain, a director of maintenance. At one time, I was a CEO of the airline, many different positions, so I've seen it all. I've seen some great airports, and I've always liked Kingman. It has such great potential. It could really be the jewel of the West, and I think we have a chance to do that. And thank you very much for the chance to be on this commission.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience apply for this commission? I must say, we had just a really impressive pool of, I believe, more than 14 candidates. A couple we couldn't consider only because their applications were considered a little bit late. I'm gonna ask the city manager for a little bit of guidance here. We are tasked with populating an entire commission this evening with seven members, and I'm gonna ask you, maybe you have a recommendation on how to best do that, but additionally, we're talking about staggered terms, so we're going to appoint, what, four to a three-year term, and then, how does that work?
Yeah, I'll let Carl speak to the terms.
We, the, part of the ordinance says that at the creation of the commission, four of them will have a term ending December 31st of 2020.
Okay.
So, because we don't always think these things through, we can either have the other three term out at 2019, or if you really want to go extend a little bit further, you could do 2021, but that would make the year a little bit longer, so, or their time, their...
But the 2019, they're eligible for reappointment?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay, so that's really not an issue?
It probably makes more sense to do at the 19, to be honest with you.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
As far as process, you know, I, my recommendation would be a paper vote, and we just tally the votes unless there's, unless the council's seen that there's another way to do it. It's unique in that we don't get this much support for committees, so it's appreciated. But I think, just kind of based on where we are and trying to go through the names in a vote, I think if each one of you would write down your top seven, and we would just give it, we'd add them up, and the top seven vote-getters would be your first committee. Sidney, anything that you would process that you'd like better than that?
I like that. I think that's probably the most efficient way to do it, at least.
Does everybody have a piece of paper in which they could do that?
Well, the city clerk very graciously wrote us a list here, so...
So, if you could just write their seven names down, we'll pass them down to Sidney, and she will compile the votes.
And as you're thinking, because we just created the committee by ordinance, it does not go into effect for 30 days.
30 days, right.
Just kind of an FYI.
Thank you for the piece of paper.
Write the seven down. Thanks.
I could put the term in now.
So, I would suggest that for terms, we draw names.
Okay. That's a great idea.
And I'll throw another thing in it while you're thinking. Any more than, if, the ordinance definitely allows for two non-city residents, and if you have more than two non-city residents, it has to be by a supermajority vote. I don't think that's gonna be a problem, but that'll be something we have to think about, because I don't know who's all residents and not residents. I know the paperwork indicates it, but... Councilman Yelkom will graciously volunteer that information.
You just recommended the top seven. Everybody's top seven? Okay.
I just want to say thank you to all of you. It's really great to have such a deep bench to select from, and I know you guys will do a great job, no matter who gets on, so thank you.
Do you want to pass this down? Okay.
That's what they're saying. After nine o'clock, it's overtime. I don't know that we have, I don't think we have that much. Yeah.
Okay, so the top six are Mr. Brackett, Mr. Finnegan, Mr. Gerlach, Mr. Hayes, Mr. Rucker, and Mr. Stutzman. And then there was a tie for the final spot between Mr. Atkinson and Mr. Amspoker.
So, we just need a vote on the final one? So, it looks like pretty unanimous, and I think any one of these applicants would do more than an amazing job. So, would you kindly repeat the names of the two? We'll entertain a motion to approve one.
Mr. Atkinson and Amspoker.
Well, I'm gonna suggest, I've seen Mr. Amspoker at like a million events. I know he's really, really up to date on everything that's going on. He's been very, very involved and engaged in what's happening out there, and I very much supported his application as somebody that I recognize is going to be very engaged in the process.
I would support David Amspoker as well.
Okay.
So do I. David Amspoker.
I do also. Me as well.
Thank you.
Me as well.
So, thank you very much. Do you need a motion to approve the slate of seven as we discussed? Okay, do we need those names again? Are you good?
You have to counsel that. Entertain a motion? Go ahead.
I would move that we populate the Airport Advisory Commission with the seven names as just read by the city clerk, with the terms to be determined.
Yes, sir.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I think, once again, we want to thank you all for your willingness to participate and very much appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and thank you for staying.
Now, before you move on, like, how to determine the terms, because at least you've got the slate.
I think we, I think we're taking your recommendation of three expire 2019, four 2022, and I'm assuming at the first meeting, you'll draw straws, right?
Yeah, it was, let me pull back the ordinance again. 19 and 20, I thought was what it was.
You told me 22.
I don't have it in front of me.
My apologies.
No, you're all right. I'm trying to find it.
So, 19 and 20, and then at the first meeting, they'll draw lots? Is that correct? Thank you.
Is that adequate notice? Adequate motion?
Yeah, 2020 for four.
Thank you, thank you very much. Moving on.
We need a vote?
Yes, we do. I'm so sorry.
We have a motion and discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to department reports. I'll turn to the city clerk. Okay, then we'll move on to announcements.
We don't have any, ma'am.
No department reports. Moving on to announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Any announcements this evening? Very quickly.
The mayor asked that I give a quick election update, as the council and many in the public are aware. We did not have enough, people submit petitions for the number of vacancies that we have for the city council. Write-ins are permitted by state statute at both the primary and general elections, so that deadline is 40 days before the primary election to be considered at the primaries, so that'll be mid-July, and those forms are available from the city clerk's office.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, council members? Okay, council requests for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments? All right, moving on, we do have need for an executive session this evening. KAA litigation pursuant to ARS 3843103A7. City attorney requests that the city council go into executive session to discuss, provide direction on the litigation action with the Kingman Airport authority. Mr. Cooper, is this an action item?
This is, it can be an action item in executive session to guide or direct.
Okay, my question is, I just want to let the public know whether or not they should continue to sit here. We're not going to come out and take any public action on this item this evening.
We could, in theory.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. Thank you very much. So, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How about a five-minute restroom break, if you need?
Sure.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a good evening.